Good to go.
Welcome to tonight's meeting of March 24, 2025. We have a city council study session. Welcome to the Westminster City Council Study Session of March 24, 2025, and thank you for joining us. We thank you for coming and would like to remind all in attendance that our meetings are subject to the rules decorum that are posted inside the chamber doors. These rules are in effect while all meetings are in session as well as during breaks and transitions between the meetings. We want to be sure all feel welcome and remind all there is an expectation that no attendee shall disrupt this meeting and that the threats and intimidation are prohibited. No attendee shall engage in audible expressions of support or opposition for any speakers. Signs and placards are prohibited, and all attendees shall remain seated in the seats provided, not in the aisles, nor shall the doories be blocked. Okay, that sounds weird with an echo.
We'll work on that.
A city council reports. Counselor Zadeh?
No ma'am.
Counselor, hi.
Yes, so I did the chamber livestream today.
You did? Great job. Thank you.
And yeah, so that went well. I went to the very first gala that the Hmong community held, and that was great. And then on Sunday, we had the St. Baldricks raising money for cancer. And yeah, so good week. I did want to bring up, I would like to put on the calendar a vote for council to vote on if staff should draft an ordinance to ban the sale of live animals with pet shops in Westminster. So pet shops in Westminster cannot sell live animals. So if we could put that on the calendar for a vote, that would be fantastic.
Anything else?
Nope, that's it. Thank you.
Counselor Carmelia?
Lovely. I also attended those two events, and they were fantastic. I missed the dancing from the Hmong event, and so I'll make sure to capture that next year. But that was really impressive, and I learned a lot there, and I'm really grateful that they invited us to that. I forgot to mention that the Dr. Cog, the week before we went to DC, I was nominated to the RTC, the Regional Transportation Committee, and we had our first meeting this past week, and so that was really informative. And for the most part, we were working on the Unified Planning Work Program kickoff, which we presented during Dr. Cog. And so it was the same information that you received, really is what we covered in that meeting. But really, it was around helping federal guidelines regarding transportation, just taking a look at funds essentially for the region and where they're going to go over the next year because there's a lot of uncertainty, and then looking at the 10 planning factors, and then essentially taking surveys and gauging stakeholders as well as Dr. Cog on what it is that we should concentrate on. And for the most part, the results that they've seen seem to be around funding, number one, safety, number two, things like that. So nothing really new, but I will keep everyone up to date as I learn more. And that's it for me. Oh, I will add as well, I did receive an email from resident that had a suggestion around language for our signage for the Rocky Mountain Greenway Trail. And so I sent that to staff. They can take a look at it. I know that that work is ongoing. But that was interesting, and the language suggested was from some former legislation that was proposed about a decade ago, so that was interesting.
Thanks. That's right.
I didn't send anything, but I wanted to mention a few things from the NLC that I didn't get to go over last week. So I met a gentleman who's a counselor for Loveland, former fireman, and learned a lot from the Loveland fires from him about fire prevention. He said it's very important that we, this is what ordinance they're probably going to do in Loveland, anything that's a new build or they're replacing fences, no wood fences. The fences are like a wick. They made the fire travel. Also the roofs, fireproof roofs, I guess Owen Coring makes a fireproof roof called Owen's Coring Flex. They're also requiring that on new builds and anyone that's replacing a roof. They are not for these fire sprinkler systems in houses, especially for big fires because it lowers the pressure of the water to fight the fires because they're going off all the same time, and there's no water pressure. So that is, so we might look at that and maybe some of those other things. And it's also important to have screens on your vents on your roof because the sparks, you know, if you're, even if you have a brick house, the sparks will go up and go through your vents and bring your house down that way. So putting screens on top of roof vents. So I thought those are all good things to know. We also talked about home ownership. They're trying to build small homes up there in Loveland. They're doing some in Berthoud. He said that we could go look at his model homes. They're in the $200,000 to $300,000 price range, and they're small. But it's getting people home ownership instead of renting for the rest of their lives. And so he and I thought it was great. I would love a field trip seeing these houses. So I'd probably try to go, and if anyone wants to go with me, let me know. Okay, I'll talk to him about where they are. I got his card. Also, I would like to have a vote on Save Our Skies Alliance. We've had that come up several times, and I just want a formal vote up or down on that at city council meeting. The letter, the citizens in their letter. Thank you.
I, like other council members, attended the Hmong celebrations. It was a lot of fun, and I really appreciate them making us part of that. I was there for the dancing. It wasn't, it was mandatory if we were there evidently, so. But that was a lot of fun. Enjoyed it. And then St. Baldricks. And thanks both to the yacht club for putting that on as well as all of our staff who raised money for that cause. This is probably the 10th year that I've went and participated. A lot of fun.
Mayor Pretten. So yeah, I left before the dancing at the Hmong.
Just in time.
Had some good conversations, and hopefully we'll follow up with some folks. Especially there's a young lady who's at Regis University who's doing, I guess, a thesis on belonging in communities. So I was really interested to learn more about what she comes up with at the end. So hopefully she'll send it over to us when she's completed that. So I did have, just Counselor Ireland, your comments about the fire prevention code updates. I thought that I had heard that there's a state effort towards, or at least, okay, I see somebody nodding. So that would be interesting just to hear from staff and if that would be something that could be integrated into our next, I don't know if it'd be the building code or our municipal code or combination thereof, but those are.
Add to that, I'm sorry. The other thing I'd be curious about is, to Counselor Ireland's concern, my understanding of our residential sprinkler is that that doesn't come out of the same water line as like the hydrants, I don't think, but I could be wrong about that. So could you?
You just said it was a pressure problem.
Well, I understand, but I mean, every municipality is a little bit different, and I think ours is a separate line, but I would like to know if that is actual or not.
Yeah.
We'll follow up on that. Thank you.
And then the, I did send an email about some items for discussion. And so Counselor Ireland, you brought up the need to kind of follow up on our MMA letter, so thank you. So I did have a conversation with residents who are having discussions about just homelessness in our community, and they did bring up the safe ordinance that we had discussed a few weeks ago and just where we were going with that ordinance. And I know we didn't have some finite, you know, answer or direction for staff and that staff would be coming back. I just wanted to relate some of the concerns that I, that they articulated around the, what was being proposed. And one was the fact that if we do regulate within the public rights of way and are able to move people out of the rights of way, does that impact the business areas that we are trying to address? So to sort of think about, you know, are we effectively handling, you know, where people should be by pushing them into a different area, which is the private area? They also emphasized the need for safe parking and outdoor spaces, and I know we had all discussed that as well. So definitely what's the best outcome that we can get for the community that's the most effective? And I don't feel like we've had that conversation. And I'd like us to have more consolidated direction and that we all kind of buy into more for the budget. So I'm suggesting that perhaps we carve out some time to talk about just where we, you know, how that might be accomplished and what we'd want to prioritize. So I don't know the exact timing of that, but I don't know if maybe if there are people nodding.
Staff has your list and most everything on there, as we talked at our pre-meeting. We'll go to staff and several things on there. We know the police is coming back. We know more discussion with several of these things. So you had a question, or somebody, you had a question on Paldirda and that update. And so I think most everything can be addressed with upcoming agenda items.
Okay. I guess, you know, if we keep looking at things just very discreetly, like if we just look at the ordinance without having a broader picture, I don't think we're having a full enough conversation. So that, I just wanted to caveat that, and so maybe if staff is thinking about how to bring that back and what else could be, could sort of round out the picture because we do have efforts of talking with other municipalities and counties on how are we partnering? I mean, just being able to understand what are we doing would be very helpful. And that way, we could be more targeted and help prioritize ourselves on.
And we know right now neither county is doing anything.
Yeah, so that's, I think having to, you know, are there discussions to be had that staff can report back on to us so that we understand, is that, is that their MO? Or is the, are the counties actually going to, do they have a plan? Do we factor into that plan? Do we engage with dollars into that plan? And if not, then if we're really just looking at internally working with, you know, just kind of Lone Ranger-ing it, then.
That's what our VADA ended up doing.
Yeah, and then maybe there's working with our VADA, but I just want us to be able to figure out what our best choices would be.
Just to clarify, are you saying for 26 budget, new dollars? If there's potential for new dollars and how to use that? Or are you saying repurpose $25?
Not repurposing. I think, you know, this is more of a budget conversation for 2026. And I know we didn't have unified direction or, you know, support for the, what we chose to do with the 2025. And so I just want us to have a conversation about where we think our resources should go if they are limited.
And if it's really working.
Yeah.
Like, you know, maybe that can be. Going to anything worth, right?
I just want to echo, you just hit on the point that I was going to ask is to make those decisions or have that discussion. I would really want, one more time, I'm going to emphasize from staff just to know what are all the other communities doing? If the counties aren't doing anything, as we've heard, why not? So I'd love to hear from them, you know, what is their goal, like you just said. So I was going to point that out. You just said it, but thank you. But I really do feel like we need more information to go off of before.
City manager meets with both county administrators, and so he continues to push it. And he's told us there's nothing in the pipeline at the moment.
Okay. Well, I think in the, in the construct of us giving, I think we've all at one point or another given direction to look for partnership opportunities. And that's hopefully something that we can continue to do. But as we really, if we're laying out actual dollars in the 2026 budget, we need to have a conversation, I think, so that people feel like they support the direction of those dollars. But I, we just didn't give it enough time, I think, last year.
Just want to add my two cents.
Yeah.
I mean, we took $1 million. That was ARPA fund dollars. That was one-time dollars. So this council has a gap that they have to fill with the things that we've added to the budget anyway, aside from if one of the partners does come back and says, hey, you guys promised us money. So I'm for the discussion, but you know, from my perspective, that was part of the reason I voted against it. It's, you know, so it's, we know that we have budget shortfall as it is. That's why we went out and tried to raise money for our fire department. So I, you know, welcome the conversation, but like, it needs to be a full conversation about all the impacts of, you know, those kinds of decisions because, you know, at the end of the day, we could have taken those ARPA dollars and we could have put them towards a fire department. I mean, there could have, we could have done just about anything with that money. But now that money's gone, so we do have a gap that we're going to have to fill for, you know, whatever the council decides they want to do around homelessness where those dollars were being spent.
Yeah, yeah. So I'm hoping that staff can help facilitate.
Mayor Pretten, mayor, thank you. Part of the manager's report describes the upcoming engagement next week that staff and the city council will be having with Westminster Community on Budget Town Hall. That'll be a great opportunity to be further informed on these things. And then we do have scheduled in May a budget workshop. And depending on, you know, inputs from the community, that will probably drive your agenda for the May budget workshop. So Acting Director Otzelberger is here. He's listening. Police Chief Hubbard is here. He's listening. As you know, there are staff leads on this matter and will be completely prepared to address your questions at future activities.
Great, thank you. Okay, and sorry, I'm taking a few minutes here. The other thing that I sent around to you, if you've been able to open it, it's a, it's a letter from one of our fellow counselors over in the city in County of Broomfield regarding the Front Range Passenger Rail Board and a request that we review and determine whether we want to sign on to it. So perhaps that could be.
Again, Chris Chauvin is coming early April. I don't know the date. I just, Chris had told me in a NADA meeting he was coming sooner than later. So hopefully we can discuss that then.
Okay, if staff could provide a date for that, that would be helpful so I can get back to the counselor on our timing.
We'll follow up as soon as I can engage Chris and his team and provide a date.
Okay, okay. And then. All right, and then I shared, I think the full, did I forward the email regarding the Open Space acquisition?
It may have been this afternoon. I don't.
All right, I'll check on that. Okay.
Sooner, but we'll take a look at it when we see it.
Okay. And finally, there's a request from Chris Alred to have Westminster host the DOE, the Department of Energy Legacy Management Community Meeting. So there was an email and none of us responded, so I was just wondering if.
Staff is going to make that contact and just see what's involved.
Okay.
And who's done it before and blah, blah, blah. So they're on it.
Okay. And just so you guys know, for Front Range Passenger Rail, there is a service development plan, outreach effort, and the service development plan is kind of what they're going to be doing, what it would look like. And they are going to have this sort of online open house. And I'm kind of working with them to figure out how cities and people get a little more engaged. So it seems very light touch. So I think, you know, if Chris is going to come back to us, Chris Chauvin is going to come back to us, and if he's at all engaged as well with staff and that, that would be helpful. I will on my end work to find out if there's a way we can sort of expand their outreach efforts, but.
Open house online. Interesting.
Indeed. Okay, thank you for letting me take up that much time.
My question to council is, we've heard it many times. I think it would be quick. Do you want staff to write a letter of support for Carolyn's letter? So that I don't, can we have that on next week's agenda if that's voted on?
I think we can prepare that between now and when your agenda is released on Wednesday, if that's the direction of the city council.
I'm just asking, do you want to get that done tonight?
Sure.
Yes, no, maybe?
I think yes.
Do I hear any no's?
To sign on to the letter or to add it to the agenda?
No, to go ahead and write a letter of support or that we are supporting our citizens' letter that they're sending to the commissioners. I have shared my only thing with the, we as one entity don't tell another entity what to do. So the landing fee piece is difficult for me, but they understand that. I've said it. And hopefully the commissioners know we're not telling them. This is the citizens' suggestions. We're just supporting our citizens.
Yeah, because I also feel like there are certain things in there that I
Yeah.
wouldn't go to the nth degree on, but yeah.
So I think it could be simple, just that the council supports, and I'd, whatever.
Our skies.
Save our skies.
Yeah.
I know that our, the manager's office and clerk can get that there, but I wanted Attorney Frankel to be involved in what the.
Yeah, I think having a letter agendized for discussion at next week's meeting, absolutely. Assuming that staff knows what the letter is going to, what a draft letter might look like.
Sweet, simple that we support our citizens.
Well, yeah, and so with that said, if we don't, I mean, my concerns, I have some of the same concerns as far as what's in the letter, but I 100% support that the commissioners should look at that letter and take everything in it into consideration. So if you could, my others would be to write a letter that says, we support you taking seriously this letter from the Save Our Skies and, you know, addressing their concerns. I feel like that that's responsible, and it kind of keeps us, and make it part of the conversation because I think that it should all be, but I just don't know enough about each of the things to say, yeah, I support them doing these things.
Exactly.
Mayor, I was going to add, I think Counselor Demont said it better than I would have, but I was going to say the same thing. The way that you propose we go about this, I think, is the right call. So thank you for that because I've been trying to figure out how exactly to what we all just said. We're not the ones to tell another council what to do.
Right, yeah.
But maybe we can add in that letter, you know, this has been an ongoing, long, lengthy discussion, and we support your urgency, I think, around, you know, really taking a look at this and what we can, what our next steps are, you know?
I'd like to make it as succinct as possible, short and sweet, and so there can't be any miscommunication of what we are saying. Okay, I didn't hear any no's, so if you would get that done, we can check that off of everybody's list.
Will do.
Okay, for me, real quick, I just remind everybody emailing during city council meetings or study sessions to people. That is our policy that we don't do it. It was done during last week's meeting, so I just remind us. That's, we're not to be using our devices for that stuff. Last week, we had the mayor-manager talk. It was good. Have had great feedback from people. Quarterly mayor's meeting, get together, that was, it's always good to hear what others are doing. And that's all I'll say on that because I think some other things will be coming up that maybe some others. that maybe some others want us to chime in on for some port with some things that are going on. But we'll discuss that when it gets here. The MONG Gala, you know, it was so much about tradition and they are such a culture about tradition and they're so proud of their traditions. And so they invited me to read the scholarships that they were going to award that night. So there was 15 that I read. I cried almost in each one because since I was on council the first time and they started the MONG New Year, I have attended those. And they made me an honorary MONG in 2011 and outfitted me in their costume dress. And I even have a MONG name, Misi. And so they're very special to me in my heart. And, and the scholarships, the students were to write about what MONG culture meant to them. And I just will say to everybody listening that if you work in a school, I don't care which school district, and this would probably apply to anyone that feels they're a little bit different. Lot of mental health issues and feeling alone and that they're not like other people. That just resonated through those scholarships. So it was fun to get to see the two that did receive the scholarships. And then on Saturday, we had St. Baldrecks and it's always great. Everybody, I had scans last week. The good news is I don't have to have another one for nine weeks. They're moving me from six weeks to nine weeks. My scan showed nothing new, it's sort of plateaued, he says that's okay, so we're good to go. So thanks again for all of your guys' support. City manager, Assistant City Manager, whoever you are tonight.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Mayor Protem Larry Dorr, Deputy City Manager. And Mr. Andrews is away from the office, so I'm filling in for him tonight and at your study session. Thank you for that. As well as Director Kimball is serving as Acting Deputy City Manager. So I do have a bit of a report, Mr. Andrews left me with quite a bit of information to share with you. As I mentioned earlier with Mayor Protem, the city's upcoming Budget Town Hall is next Thursday, April 3rd. It's our second annual, so please join Mayor, Mayor Protem and Westminster City Council for the second annual. We think it will be better than last year's if, if you can top that. And Thursday, beginning at 5:30 to 8:00 at City Park Recreation Center, we will be centering the discussion on firefighting and roadway infrastructure, as you would imagine. Food, refreshments, childcare will be available for kiddos three months to 11 years old. So please come next Thursday. We look forward to engaging with the Westminster community on the city budget. Next slide, I'm pleased to announce that last Tuesday morning, the city's new website launched. And it's a new and improved website. Westminstercode.gov is ADA accessible, mobile-friendly and organized and designed with a resident-first focus. New features and modifications follow best practice for government communications and meet new state and federal accessibility guidelines. We're very proud to announce that. And I also would like to add that one of our goals was to simplify and streamline. We reduced the number of webpages from 1,113 to 387. Further, we had 6,118 PDF documents on the website. We reduced that to 1,023. And we would have had even fewer, but we added many Spanish translation versions of those PDFs. So very big accomplishment, I want to thank our Communications Division Manager and our Chief Information Officer and their staff. But every department of the city was involved in this evolution, so very pleased to bring that.
I just want to share, because we did this on Tuesday night, if anybody finds a glitch, please tell us. Call, don't sit there fuming, just things happen. And so we, we can't fix it if we don't know about it.
100%, and this is website 2.0 and we anticipate 2.1, 2.2, et cetera. So please keep the feedback coming to us, we really welcome that. And it's a, it's still a very substantial communication website. So with that next slide, we have Neighborhood Enhancement Grant Program. This program opened on March 3rd, it closes very soon. So I want to give an announcement to that. Community projects that improve neighborhoods appearance and quality of life are eligible. Parks, Recreation, Libraries and Open Space Advisory Board will review each proposed project and will select those that best fit the criteria and the available funding. There's a $10,000 maximum project award and the 2025 theme is community building and sustainability. Applications must be submitted by 5:00 PM Friday, April 4th, so the deadline is coming. And you see our web address is Westminstercode.gov/NeighborhoodGrant. So please get the word out and we look forward to seeing those submittals. Next slide, for tonight's agenda, Monday, March 24th, we have presentations, a concept plan review for Mandalay Gardens and Light Industrial Flex Development. We look forward to setting that forth. We have two more with just three to go in total of our department budget presentations. We'll have Mr. Davey Godfrey, Human Resources Director, and Ms. Lindsay Kimball, Community Services Director, present their budgets. And then finally, we have a presentation by the Westminster Community Foundation and three executive sessions focused on affordable housing, on economic development assistance and legal matters for the city. So those will keep us moving forward tonight. Elsewhere across Westminster, in the next slide, tomorrow is the Planning Commission meeting from 7:00 to 10:00 PM here at City Hall and City Council Chambers. Wednesday, we have the Environmental Advisory Board meeting at 6:30. It's a hybrid meeting, it can be in-person here at City Hall or via Teams. Thursday, we have the Westminster Community Development Block Grant Consolidated Plan, Community Input Meeting from 6:00 to 7:00 at City Park Rec Center. And then this upcoming Saturday, we have our Car Seat Clinic from 8:30 to noon, put on by the Westminster Fire Department at Station 2. And then I'll just describe a few of the things very quickly if I can. We've got two full slides for council's next meeting. On the next slide, we have presentations and a proclamation designating April as Child Abuse Prevention Month. We have information-only memos on the progress at 3915 West 73rd Avenue and the Bark Restaurant, along with official city positions that may be taken on legislation considered by the Colorado General Assembly. We have eight items on your consent agenda, including three second readings. We have public hearings in the consideration of a preliminary development plan amendment for the North Huron PUD, along with a comprehensive plan amendment and consideration of a preliminary development plan amendment for the Uplands Project. Next slide, under new business, first reading of councilor's bill amending Westminster Municipal Code regarding signs, subdivision entry signs, et cetera. First reading of councilor's bill amending Westminster Municipal Code for the creation of a new public weight contractor's license. And first reading of councilor's bill proposed development assistance agreement with Maker Housing Partners, subject to the results of your discussion and executive session tonight, along with a major action regarding the adoption of the Parks, Recreation and Libraries Vision Plan, a plan that has been before the city council a number of times prior. And then under old business and second reading ordinances, second reading of ordinance amending the code for unclaimed intangible property. It's going to be quite a meeting. It's unusual for our city to have a meeting on the 5th Monday, but our city council adjusted its schedule for the National League of Cities Conference and hence we're meeting on the 5th Monday of March. So on the next slide, again, as mentioned, please contact us, not just regarding the website, but anything happening across Westminster. You can meet, reach Mr. Andrews or myself at the City Manager's Office at 658-2003. Mr. Andrews' email is presented there, jandrews@westminstercode.gov. And of course, you can follow us on any of our social media platforms, on Facebook, Instagram, X and Nextdoor. Thank you for the opportunity to present this and lead, join the meeting in Mr. Andrews' stead. And that's all from the manager's office, thank you.
Perfect, let's move on to presentations. We have Concept Plan Review for Mandalay Gardens Light Industrial Flex Development. The next item is a Concept Plan Review for Mandalay Gardens Light Industrial Flex Development. This is a concept plan review, it is not a hearing on a development application. Its purpose is to allow city council to learn about a proposed project in its beginning stages and provide feedback to the applicant on city council's general impressions of the proposal. In accordance with the Westminster Municipal Code, Concept Plan Reviews occur after city staff complete the pre-application review for a proposed project, but before staff perform a technical review for the project. Technical review, which involves an official application for an ODP and PDP or amendment thereto, will occur only if the applicant chooses to move a project forward after its Concept Plan Review. As part of the review process tonight, city staff will provide a brief introduction and then the applicant or its representative will present an overview of the applicant's development proposal. City council may then ask questions of the applicant and provide the applicant feedback on the proposal. City council comments on this proposal are gratuitous in nature and are not binding on city council, the Planning Commission, city staff or the applicant. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, city councilors. John McConnell, Planning Manager here tonight to provide you with the introduction to this Concept Plan Review. This project is located at 10385 Wadsworth Boulevard. It's just west of the intersection of West 103rd Avenue and Wadsworth Boulevard. It's highlighted here and, or outlined here in red. As you'll notice, this is on the edge of our corporate limits. It's within an enclave of unincorporated Jeffco. So most everything on the east side of Wadsworth Boulevard is in the city and most everything is in the county on the west side. The zoning of the property is planned unit development. As noted in the agenda memo, this property was annexed into the city around 2007. At the time, it was designated as retail commercial at the request of the property owner. At the time, it was zone planned unit development, but struggled to develop over the years. The 2040 comp plan designated this as employment flex and that made it a little bit more desirable for development and a little more consistent with the land use designations within our corporate limits across the street. The proposal includes approximately 8,700 square feet of light industrial flexible building space and all site improvements. The proposal includes an eight-foot screening wall on the perimeter of the development as well. And this, the site is just, just under a, a sink, a one acre. So a preliminary development plan and an official development is planned to enti, is required to entitle this property. Neither exists on the property today, again, it's zone PUD, but it doesn't have entitlements. Preliminary staff analysis, really just focused on site design considerations and architectural considerations. As our applicant will demonstrate in their, in their presentation, focuses would be really on considering adverse impacts. This being a small site surrounded by mostly residential and really rural residential properties in unincorporated Jefferson County. So the, trying to buffer this use and interfacing those existing uses should be consideration. The design of the structure should also reflect the historical and rural, rural context. This is an industrial building, but as you'll see in their slides, they've gone to great effort to embrace the rural farm aesthetic with their architecture. So the CPR tonight was noticed, there was one sign placed on the property. There was a notice in the newspaper and 98 notices were mailed to adjacent property owners. All right, with that, unless council has any questions of me, I'd like to turn it over to our applicant. There are three members of the applicant team here tonight, so I'm going to leave this seat and allow those three folks to sit here.
Welcome.
Thank you. Thanks to everyone here, we're looking forward to hearing your comments and any questions on our, what we think is a pretty simple little project. And kind of as John said, it, it is actually very small, it's kind of a little, it's definitely house-sized. So in a way to put a commercial building on there that's usable was a little bit of a challenge, but really with all the requirements for, you know, site circulation, for traffic and parking, it's kind of what you see there is what's left. And we're meeting, we're still meeting the, you know, landscape rules. And we will have an actual landscape design firm is working on the design for that. So really, we just kind of worked in from all the edges and what you see there in brown is just a representation of, of the roof of, of the building. And I think that next slide will help show kind of our, our echoing of kind of rural, what we, what we, and residential too. So kind of the concept was, number two there, kind of the third image down is what you would see from Wadsworth. And so that was the area where we could make it look kind of barn-like a little bit with some, some steel siding there. And then the main building behind it is, would be a split-faced block with a brick base. And then we, the only other thing we could kind of try to do with the rest of that building there, it's really just five units. And so each unit, we kind of went with a more residential porch-type roof is our, is our concept there. And that's, that's pretty much it in terms of kind of the architecture of trying to relate to residential and rural residential. Here's just kind of some perspective views. And again, that number two, one on the right side is kind of what you would see coming in from 103rd. Without any landscape there, those are obviously just the building. And we're trying to keep the west end of the building, we think, which is the image on the left there, is, you know, the first away from the street, maybe the quietest. So that's kind of our area, we think, would be for employees to have a table out there and things like that. And potentially mountain views from there still. Eight-foot wall will cut some out off, but we understand why we need to have that wall for sound. And then this last image is really just, that isn't the landscape final design. That was just, here's the colors of the building we're proposing. It's sort of some color, you know, think red rocks for the split-faced block and a little bit darker red for the base to make it look heavier. And then that, that front unit that is angled because of our, our property line, which we could go back to the site plan if we need to. But there's an old right-of-way there for Wadsworth when it must have been angled through there. And so there's kind of that space between our angled property line, which then creates the angle of our building, which also, in my opinion, gave us something interesting to react to on the front. And luckily, that's the side that faces the street. So that's what everybody that goes by the building will get to enjoy. And so those are kind of our color schemes and it's, you can just barely see on the right, bottom right corner, that's kind of where the sidewalk would come from Wadsworth into our property. And then all the front doors being on the south side of the building for the units. And that is pretty much it. Would look forward to any questions or comments or?
Anyone? Councilor Ireland?
So what do you think the end use will be?
Right, so the spaces aren't big enough to do too much. It's kind of like, think a cabinet maker, for, for instance, might be the loudest type of, it's kind of a works, store, play type of concept too. There's, each of those four units has the garage door that you can see on the back or access into the main floor and there would just be a bathroom in each unit. And then at the front, the south end, those upper story windows are just a small mezzanine in each one that would be considered office space. And so the amount of parking was designed based on, somebody could have their own little shop there with a little bit of office space upstairs. It's, it's not retail or, so somebody coming to meet, say with that business owner, would, you know, have to enter the bottom space and then go up the stairs to get, get to the quote, "office." the quote "office." But, or, you know, a sign company. What are some of the other A that you've?
Machining, so lathe or machining, subtractive manufacturing or additive with like 3D printing or the metal printing, things like that. And textiles, it could be a textile shop. So, you know, small, small employment business owners. And we could go with like the, the store and stuff like that if somebody wanted to put their personal, you know, their RV, they have their precious RV or something. But it's mainly just, we're, we're focusing on small employment, so.
Are all the units like 2,000 square feet or?
Roughly, yeah. The fifth unit is, that's kind of the special part on the end there is, I forget how many square foot, but it's maybe a 700 square feet.
So how close is the closest house to this?
Is there a way for me to go back? So you can see on it, they're just outlined in the dark all the way around. The house on the north is the, that's their garage. And then, and it's a single-story house, I think. It might have a partial second story, but that's technically the house that's closest to us. And then to the south there is, is the next closest one. And then Emmanuel Church is the little one, one, one-room building across the street to the east.
Used to be the Mandalay School.
And then what's not shown, the northeast corner is the big commercial, another kind of red block building there that's, you know, 100 times bigger than us. But that's kind of the, to the west there and the north, that's a shed for that property in the north. And then there's another single house there to the.
Those are only parking on one side?
There, there's five parking places on the north side, which would probably be for the business owners.
I'm just worried about the noise for the houses there because the recycling center was a problem with neighbors right nearby.
Yeah, I mean, we have the, to meet the sound requirement, we have the eight-foot tall wall that starts at the north and wraps all the way around to the south. Unfortunately, you know, the unfortunate part is the, the skinniness of the site. We can't like do a berm and the wall on top because there's just not enough room in that little sliver of landscape on the south and the north. I think, you know, the trash, trash will be on the west side in the corner. That, that diagram is, we've since learned that the trash needs to, will pull straight in to get trash instead of rolling something out. So that little notch on the west side of the landscape will go up into one of the corners. But away from Wadsworth, kind of our backyard, so to speak. We, we also have a traffic study being done, so we'll, you know, for, for PDP, we'll have those kind of numbers. I don't, I don't think we even need this many parking places for what the use will really be, but it is per code to what, it's just we don't see. And I, I kind of go like a cabinet maker, I, as an architect, I've had to go to my cabinet maker a couple of times and I'm the only car in the parking lot. You know, he doesn't see people, he's making things. So, but we have a plan for everything, obviously.
We have the 50-foot setbacks from the property line to the building too, so we have that, that full space there too.
Yeah, we're, we're 50 in from each direction.
Okay.
So it's, I don't, you know, if you, it's kind of hard telling that image. I think that, I think the corner of the house to the north would show in that back right-hand side there a little bit from this kind of bird's eye view. I don't think the owners will, because of the wall, they're not going to see much of the lower level of our, especially the house to the south. Or the guy to the north is so close to the wall that I think he's mostly going to see wall and a little bit of the building above, which I think in a way is a good thing. And our best foot forward is facing Wadsworth, which obviously was planned, but also the site kind of told us that's what we should do. So it works that way in my mind. And then landscaping will help with sound too, that we will have the trees, which I was trying to represent. There's tree, like the trees that you can see over the top of the tower, that's the back right-hand corner of the property, so.
Mayor Protem?
I had similar questions to Councilor Ireland. So have you, I guess the final question would be, have you, or do you plan to speak with the neighboring properties? Because I would imagine the eight-foot wall kind of right next to their house is a little visually obtrusive. And if you're out living in a rural setting, that's just, will be of impactful for them, a different change. So I just highly suggest talking with them to figure out, is there, you know, I don't know, can you plant some trees on the other side of the wall on their property or, you know, just to work with them? I think overall, you've done a good job of trying to address the, the, the city's, the city staff's comments.
I spoke with the neighbor to the left or to the north, Larry, and he's got a small wooden fence that was hit by a drunk driver and he's all about an eight-foot sound wall there. He loves the block wall. The neighbor to the south has an eight-foot wooden fence already built through most of their property. So I've, I've yet to talk to him in person, but I'm sure he already has an eight-foot fence, so.
Okay.
And the main lanes, of course, went out to all of them. I mean, the other thing about the house to the north is the drive as you, I mean, that's something else to say, you know, staff, when we were working, we need to, of course, there's two houses to the north of us, actually. The next one further north, you can't see in this image, and that's where you can see the drive kind of going up that way. Well, this guy's got a drive that goes around the south end of his house to the shed and things back there. So there's a driveway between his garage and our wall. But your, it's, your point is well-made that the wall is close, you know, to their property. I think the guy in the south, like you said, he won't be able to see the wall. I mean, initial, what I want to talk to him about is what do we want to do with a wall and a fence right next to each other? You know, a chance for some things to grow in between those that we might not want and we wouldn't be able to see it from our side. I think I've run into that in residential projects a lot where two neighbors want a fence and then they're like, well, what are we going to do about the stuff in between them? So maybe you should just agree on one fence. That would be the solution, but sometimes things aren't that easy.
Anything else? Councilor Camerily, did I see your hand?
Yes, I mean, to be fair, on my point was just brought up, I was going to say it's, it looks like there's trees. Is that just a suggestion or it sounds like that is the plan?
That is the plan. It's just the trees I'm showing aren't exactly the right places. Like this big tree in the front, that probably wouldn't, well, it'd be years before a tree would be that big in between our property and Wadsworth, you know, in that, for, there's a, there's another like 40 feet from Wadsworth, from future Wadsworth to the angled part
I guess my question is, you know, if the parking isn't necessary, would it help any of us to make an exception here? You know, to reduce some of the concrete there? And I mean, it sounds like maybe we don't want to add it to the building, but even just to, I'm glad that we're adding the trees for a couple of reasons, to, to share with you where my mind is at, is the sound, as we just talked about. But also anytime I see, you know, cement and pavement, I'm just trying to think, okay, how do we offset that with a few trees and more grass? You know, because the heat island, we're just adding more concrete to the middle of our city, which raises the temperatures a bit. You know, if we don't need the parking, what are staff's thoughts here?
Very good question. So through the review process, the applicant has the ability to propose a reduced amount of parking with a traffic study associated with that. And it, the traffic study could be based on similar uses that they've worked on in the past or similar uses in our area. But staff can help negotiate a smaller parking recommendation to the city council ultimately.
Just think that might be a good idea.
Mayor, or Councilor Demat?
I'm just, I know this area really well, it was pretty close to my house. So I would think in that kind of space, you might have people who have work trucks too. I mean, you may, you may not have traffic from customers coming and going, but I mean, you might, if you decrease it, you might limit the tenant capabilities that you might have by not having that parking. Because I imagine that you're probably going to have people who have some level of work trucks for their fleet, for their people to go out and install or whatever they do.
Yeah, like if there's a plumber that, you know, has a couple of crewmen and they're, they're going to have their two trucks and somebody's going to stay at the office, right? And just answer calls or whatever. And so there's, that's the kind of the parking in the back. There's also the space inside, which depending on, again, how much stuff they're actually storing in there versus having a place to pull a truck in. But that's a good point. I mean, the landscape designs are following, you know, the guidelines for the city too. And, you know, like there will be a berm in the front there between our north-south drive on the front and the street, which doesn't help with the two houses we're talking about, south and north, but it helps with, with sound from the street and with views from the street. So.
Remind me, on the property to the north of this, do they kind of go up in elevation from this property or is it pretty, pretty level?
Yeah.
Doesn't go up till the railroad tracks?
And then the, the access we're providing there is where the existing dirt drive is now. It, it works out that it's out. It's hard to see in this image, but I think you can kind of see the diagonal line kind of going through our intersection inside the site, kind of. That's our property line. So it works out, it's not technically an easement for them that we're going to provide pavement from Wadsworth all the way around, so they're going to pull off of our pavement onto their dirt drive. But.
To me, it looks like a, a nice use for kind of an odd little lot that's been there for a long time. So thank you for bringing it to us.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Thank you.
And our landscape plan does have six trees in it, so.
The more the merrier. I drive past this multiple times a day and so know it well. And I'm excited for something nice to be there. It's been dirt for so long and, you know, other things. That whole area is sort of a mishmash because of unincorporated and at least you're not next to the haunted house on down the road. So I'll be glad about that. Yeah, I think it looks great and probably something we don't have a lot of here in the city and excited to see who might be coming.
You've been checking on my sign, then, huh?
Yes.
The wind didn't blow it down, not once.
No. So anything else that you want to share?
I don't think so.
Okay. Thank you for coming. Maybe moving out of their garage and getting their home back.
My wife could send me there for sure. You could be an architect in that space. Get out of our house.
Thank you so much for being here tonight.
Staff, do you have anything else?
Nothing for us, thank you.
As stated at the outset of this concept review, plan review, counselor comments are gratuitous and do not bind or obligate the applicant, city staff, the planning commission, or city council to any course of action or future decision. Thanks. Next, human resources budget presentation.
Erin Fariter? Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, city councilors. Erin Fariter, Policy Budget Administrator. Thank you for your time over the past several weeks as departments have shared their budget presentations. We hope you found these valuable. Your questions and feedback on department priorities are critical in guiding discussions as we prepare for the 2026 budget, in addition to the questions during the earlier conversations. Tonight, we will hear from the Human Resources and Community Services Department and with Chief of Staff's office concluding the budget presentations on April 7. Each presentation this evening will outline their 2025 resources and priorities. We appreciate your continued engagement in the budget process and look forward to what we can work, work on together as we move forward in the process. Without further ado. Davy Godfrey.
Welcome.
Hey, thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, councilors. I'm Davy Godfrey, the Human Resources Director, and thank you for the opportunity to present the HR Department's budget and priorities for 2025. As I haven't had too many opportunities to come before you and provide some information, I'll tell you a little bit about myself and my background. I was born and raised in Alabama, Roll Tide, have two undergraduate degrees and also have a master's degree in human resources management. I hold two senior HR certifications, one from the aptly-named HR Certification Institute and the other from the Society for Human Resource Management. I also recently obtained my Certified Labor Relations Professional Designation from the National Public Employer Labor Relations Association, and I previously held a certification as a pension plan fiduciary that didn't transfer to Colorado, unfortunately. I retired from the Army in 2015 after a career in logistics and human resources. Last month, I reached my 10-year anniversary of local government service. My second year with Westminster anniversary was last month. But just yesterday was my 30th anniversary of when I took an oath to enlist in the Alabama Army National Guard. I actually saw that on the calendar and didn't even realize it. First and foremost, I view human resources as a core service that is necessary to the performance of the city's mission. And we're an internal service provider and strategic partner for all city departments, ensuring we attract, retain, and develop a highly skilled workforce to support Westminster's mission and strategic goals. Now, tonight, I'm going to cover four different areas. Some of the stuff may seem redundant after a while or I'll, or it may seem like I'm saying the same thing. The first is HR's alignment with the city's strategic plan. Two is the budget overview, including staffing and financial highlights. Three, key priorities and investments for 2025. And four, how we're enhancing employee development and organizational vitality. And here's our overview here. And as you can see, I have three listed strategic priorities and, and we play our most critical role out of these three in advancing organizational vital, organizational vitality, which is one of our six total strategic priorities. And our goal in HR is to foster a high-performing workforce by investing in employee development, recruitment, retention, and equitable policies. Our department consists of two divisions and one administrative section. The administrative section manages HR policies, the city's administrative policies, compliance, operational efficiencies, labor relations, and executive talent recruitment and development for department directors and division managers. And some of you may know Dee Martin. She was our prior HR director some years ago and she's now my go-to linchpin for that effort. We have our Employee Administration Division overseeing employee benefits, wellness programs, training and development, and citywide internship and volunteer programs, that last one being very near and dear to council, I know. Our Operations Division, which manages recruitment, staffing, compensation, employee relations, property liability, workers' compensation, and workplace safety. And we remain committed to our recruitment and staffing efforts. We value diverse backgrounds. We encourage inclusion and belonging. We ensure that HR policies and practices create a workplace that reflects the values of Westminster's community and aligns with the city's strategic plan and its guiding principles. A little budget overview. Any, the staffing growth on here, of note, you're going to, this reflects the general fund. I have four and a half FTE that are funded through two separate funds, the Benefits Fund and the Property and Liability Fund. And now staffing has remained relatively stable over the years with only a modest increase that I'll talk about to meet some growing demands in our training and development area. For the General Fund 23 to 24, we moved our risk manager, Marty Erickson, from the Property and Liability Fund into our General Fund. And we also gained Retirement Services, another one and a half FTE, took them from my boss in finance, so we could have all the benefits under one umbrella. And from 24 to 25, I bumped up a half-time position to full-time because Jolene Donahue is doing a lot of great training videos, a lot of demand, especially coming out of the city management office, oddly enough, that's going to help you all with some of the budget training. She's actually working on that right now and you're going to see that as well coming up. For our budget breakdown, we, the budget consists of four primary categories, Personnel Services, which is salaries, benefits, career development, recruitment, Contractual Services. We have an investment in emotional intelligence training or compensation and classification study, the first of this magnitude in over 20 years, coming in right around of half of what we budgeted. And then Commodities, which supports training materials and executive talent development. And Capital Outlay, not, not a very big budget there, but it covers our office equipment and the IT investments. The administrative section, I know that guy right there. You'll notice that the FTE were restructured as before 2024, all the General Fund employees were in one division, just all smashed together. And we separated those out with the help of Erin, who was here. We really worked hard on that to get those out divisionally. Under Contractual Services, I did mention the Emotional Intelligence Training and Comp and Class Study in the previous slide. And one item I want to mention of note regarding compliance that I said that we're responsible for in, in my little section here, is we're the only local government in the state of Colorado that is image-certified through the Department of Homeland Security. That stands for Mutual Agreement Between Government and Employers. Is we're the only local government in the state of Colorado that is image certified through the Department of Homeland Security. That stands for mutual agreement between government and employers. It ensures we lead by example to comply with federal hiring requirements. Uh, of note, all of our employees receive their appointments or promotions through merit and are authorized to work in the United States. We passed a federal audit with flying colors. And we, we again, signed that agreement. So if we did happen to stumble, we would never get fined. That's part of the program. You look up more about that if you wish. Uh, but we'll see where that goes. We're trying to get some training. But the federal government's going through some things right now, so we're having a hard time getting some training scheduled, more to follow on that. Um, a key budget investment for 2025, we budgeted 250,000 for our comp and class study, but that's coming in right around to half of what we budgeted. We had to budget well in advance of getting the RFP out. But that ensures our pay structure remains competitive, uh, which is extremely important for keeping a talented workforce. Our employee administration division is led by Lisa Christman, HR manager, who's been with the city for almost 45 years. Her division is small but potent. There are three FTE not indicated on this slide that are funded by the benefits fund to give her 9.5 total. And again, division responsible for employee development and training, medical, dental, and pension programs, wellness program. And the volunteer program. And again, that's a very important program, I know for council, provided over $1 million of labor value, about 1.12 to be exact. And 2024, almost 3,000 volunteers. Uh, so we're very proud of that effort that Martha Hines is is involved in, just received recognition for that. Recently, as you know, Madam Mayor, and we're again, very proud of that. Uh, key budget investments for um. 2025, as you can see on here, we we have a six seconds program for emotional intelligence. This is, this is a very important program. It's a three year program. We're in the second year of that. It it minimizes workplace conflicts, enhances decision making, and improves customer interactions. It does help reduce claims or litigation. Uh, but the big thing is it's people focused. Uh, we've all heard of the golden rule of treating others how you'd want to be treated, but this training is more along the lines of the platinum rule. Treat others how they want to be treated. Uh, we've also have a little bump up of our budget here because we went up on the point five FTE for the training and instructional designer. And that's just strengthening our employee learning programs. And so priorities for 2025, the first bullet there talks about the RFP for record keeping and investment consulting services. Uh, we are in the final stages of selection for our 401A record keeper with that we're currently within power. Uh, some of you may have seen their name on the stadium downtown. Um, they they give the Broncos about $5 million a year for that, by the way. So we help with that effort. Just to have their name on that. Our investment consulting RFP has been delayed until the end of the year. And we extended with Innobest. We've been with them for many years. But we extended, which segues into the bullet related to evaluating the the benefits package against the market, that fourth bullet. Uh, we extended because we're currently in the process of also exploring adding a defined benefit pension plan option for general employees. Um, so we wanted to keep our investment consultant on so to to help lead us through that. For our exploration for a defined benefit plan, we're using Segal as our consultant. We're again, in the early stages, but it's very important that this effort, I will say. Uh, the Urban Institute indicates that 86% of local and state government employees nationwide have access to a defined benefit pension. And our employees also make up part of the 71% of local and state government employees in Colorado who don't participate in social security. So we don't have that that leg of the stool, if you will, for a defined benefit option of some sort. And so we're going to explore that. Uh, one of my employees gives me a hard time because I like to say our benefits package is complete, like the rings of Thanos. We're just missing the divine benefit. Uh, ring. Um, she always gets on to me and says that Thanos was bad and killed half the people, so we don't want to, you know, we don't want to do that. Um, we've invested in, for the second bullet there, for personal learning and development opportunities, again, like the emotional intelligence training, very important. To give our employees those opportunities so they can grow. We also have a very robust emerging leaders program to help grow our next generation. Of leaders in the city because, you know, we're all, we're not going to be here forever. I'm not. Uh, and so we want these folks that are going to this, going to this training to one day be here. Um, it's, it's, it always hit me today that April 4th is the city's 114th anniversary. Uh, so uh, that's, it's very important that that has got me thinking. It's very important to grow when we have the 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 214th anniversary, which employees are going to be here. Uh, we're going to help grow those and help establish that foundation. Uh, we're working on increasing the number of wellness participants. The current sustainable target is 75%. Now we sit at 80% for wellness participants. Our aspirational goal. Is to get as close to 100% as possible. We want to improve. I think I heard the mayor say earlier about mental health. But we want to improve mental health support for employees, especially our public safety. Uh, we want to expand sleep hygiene, weight management, tobacco cessation programs. And this is crucial as only non smokers can receive our wellness premium discount for our health insurance. And these efforts that we've had, had the effect of reducing medical claims costs. But again, it's also about taking care of our people. We want people to come to work. We want to reduce burnout, reduce turnover, reduce absenteeism, et cetera, because that's how we can. Continue to provide good core services here at the city. And we're also going to conduct an RFP for our new performance management system this year. That's the last bullet. We've made some changes as to how we complete performance appraisal since my arrival. And we want this system to help usher in the most effective way to teach, coach, mentor, and evaluate employees. It increases engagement. And again, we want a good, solid workforce. Our HR operations division, as you can see, Marty here is led by Marty Erickson. You'll see, you'll talk to her later during executive session. Um, she's been with us for almost 24 years, maintains our tie to SERSA as a board member since 2004. She's currently the secretary and treasurer. And the former board chair. And she, her division manages recruitment, retention efforts, employee relations processes, annual compensation analysis. The property liability program, safety program, and our in-house workers' compensation program that we're really proud of. And there are 1.5 FTE funded within the property liability fund that you don't see indicated on here. So yeah, our, our, our budget here, um, you know, as you can see, our, our budget didn't go up significantly. It was just, you know, personnel costs were. Uh, minor from just normal increases there. Our contractual services actually went down. We did some reshuffling in our budget. And commodities and capital stayed the same, so nothing significant on that slide. Our priorities for 2025, uh, you'll see our Jedi B for the first bullet there. Uh, those are embedded in our HR strategies because they reflect Westminster's values of transparency, access to opportunity, and community belonging. And our efforts there are not about quotas or preferences. They're about ensuring every qualified person has a fair shot and that we're hiring based on merit. While removing barriers that prevent talented individuals from accessing opportunities. We try to find talent and ensure our positions are reaching every possible audience. We want to find the right person with the right skills for the right job at the right time. We incorporate inclusive practices, not to lower standards, but to expand the talent pool. We recognize that merit comes in many forms, including experience, education. And lived perspective, and that's what our equity statement is about that we post with every job posting, including when we posted the city manager. Uh, position. I'm a disabled veteran myself, so I check some of those boxes. Uh, but it's about finding that person who belongs at the organization, not just fits. And our last emerging leaders class that I referenced earlier actually proposed a way to utilize LinkedIn, for example, or you could use any social media platform. As a method to reach potential candidates with the hashtag work number for Westy, work for Westy. So if you, if you want to start tagging that council, you're more than welcome. Uh, we want to maintain, as the second bullet there, a vacancy rate at or below 5%. And an annual turnover rate under 10%. We're currently at 4.33, which is really good. We're a velvet rope club here. We don't have a lot of, a lot of room. Uh, annual turnover rate under 10%. We uh, got right around that last year. The year before fell about 9.6. We're on pace to get under 10 already. Uh, and we're not even through the first quarter, but uh, so folks are maintaining, we're maintaining stability, which is, it says a lot about the organization. People want to work here. Uh, we're seeing an increase in job applicants who, go figure, who are either recently employed by or currently employed by the federal government. I don't think we're going to have a problem filling any vacant positions with the right folks anytime soon. Um, if we need them. Uh, we've recruited and filled right around 485 FTE since January 1st, 2023, and I just arrived here in February 23. So my, my folks are doing a lot of work, and that doesn't include the work we do with processing volunteers, hourlies, seasonals, that sort of thing. There's work on top of that. But the 485 FTE, we're, we're really darn proud of the work we've done there. Uh, we, again, we want to, uh, the third bullet there, conducting a comprehensive compensation and classification study to assess how competitive we are in the market. Um, the recommendations are targeted to be finished by the end of June, with the implementation of any of them to begin in 2026, the earliest. And we're waiting to see how those will take shape. We're using Bolton Rewards under Bolton Partners. To do that study. And the last bullet there, it says update safe start safety training. It's really, that's the name of the, the vendor we use for our safety platform or safety program. We've been, we've been with them for a little more than 10 years and we like using them. It works well, but it's always great to see what else is out there in the landscape. If we keep using them, I've told my folks, uh, they're from Canada, so we need to buy everything we can before the tariffs hit. Um, because otherwise, uh, we're just looking to be good stewards of taxpayer money there. Uh, lastly, uh, before I take questions, I just want to say that we are committed to a thriving workforce here at the city of Westminster. We remain dedicated. To creating a workplace culture that attracts, retains, and develops the very best talent. Our investments in total compensation, employee well-being, and leadership development that you all have supported through the budgets. Will strengthen the city's workforce and support organizational vitality. I thank you for your continued support as we work to build this workforce that reflects the best of Westminster, talented, diverse. And united in service to our community, and I welcome any questions you may have. And thank you for the opportunity. I apologize. I spoke very fast, but I was told to be brief, be bold, and be gone.
Take a deep breath. Questions?
You're good.
Counselor Carmelio.
I, Mr. Godfrey, I just want to say I really appreciate your passion for HR. It it shows through every time we speak with you. I think it shows through. Um, and I, all I hear is good things. Just yesterday at um, the goodness, um, the St. Baldry's event. You know, even there, I had employees, every time I interfaced with an employee, they tell me how much they love working for Westminster and how good things are. And I think a lot of that has to do with you and your commitment to making. Uh, the programs offered to employees, um, as well as the culture, the best that they can be. So thank you. Um, and that was an excellent presentation. Um, it's also really heartening to hear the different programs, you know, the benefits uh, that were listed. I was trying to memorize them. I'm usually pretty good at that, and then we moved on to the next slide, but they looked. Uh, very impressive, so thank you for that. Um, I did have a question on the, um, I think it was under contractual services. Um, the slide before the last one, we said it didn't go up, but then a few slides back. It seemed to be quite a jump right before that one. So one more further.
Oh, the overall?
Yeah. Um.
I think it was the first slide, actually.
The first one on dollars, yeah.
Oh, this, yeah, that's as a result of our compensation and classification study and our emotional intelligence training.
That's what you were saying. I see. Okay. And that's been ongoing. I guess I don't know if I understand the differences between these slides.
This is the overall HR budget, and then the other ones that you saw were my divisions or sections.
I see. Okay.
So it's A plus B plus C, and this is D.
Understood. Appreciate that. Okay. Um, and so it sounds like Counselor Ireland might follow up with my, there are some of my questions, but yeah.
He's great.
Uh, okay. I, yeah, I guess those, those programs that we've added on, they're ongoing and those are year over year, or were those one time purchases?
Uh, the, the emotional intelligence training, we're in year two of three, and. It's hit our budget before it was in a city centralized fund, so I took those on and starting in year two. The comp and class study is a one shot, one shot deal. Uh, and again, even though you see a delta there, we've come in at about, we're going to come in at about half of that, so I'm actually not going to spend the entire 1.13 million that you see there.
Well, that's good to hear. And either way, you know, I'm glad we're investing in emotional intelligence. I'm glad it's going to the right things. I think that's all my thoughts and questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I didn't, I don't know if I mentioned that the provider of that is Six Seconds is the name of the provider for emotional intelligence.
Okay, appreciate that.
Counselor Ireland?
I was just gonna, I was, I think she was before me and he was before.
I've got you, Mayor Pro Tem, and Demarc. That's how I saw the hands.
So are you going to include AI in any way in your department?
Uh, we already do. I, I use it all the time. I use ChatGPT. Uh, when it comes to reviewing, because I'm human and I'm, and it removes hu- human error. Uh, when it comes to any sort of policies, uh, strategic plan review, I'm already utilizing it. I pay for premium myself. Uh, out of my own pocket, and I just, I use that. I've encouraged my staff to use it, but you still have to. You still have to double and triple quadruple check because it, it sometimes it spits out some weird stuff. Uh, but we're, we're utilizing it right now just to extend ourselves. Uh, I don't know if it's going to. Obviously, with a department called Human Resources, I don't want it to replace anybody. Uh, but I think it's definitely going to be what I used to refer to as a combat enabler, a combat extender. I think that's what it's going to do here. It's just going to be a workforce extender. Uh, I don't see it replacing anybody um, anytime soon, but we're definitely going to use it to its full extent, counselor.
Mayor Pro Tem?
Um, well, thank you for uh, your presentation. Um, I had a couple of questions around the compensation and classification study. Um, one, do we anticipate that we might have an adjustment coming for the 2026 year, or is that really going to hit? Like, you know, if you do find that, oh boy, we're not paying a certain class of employees enough, when would the results of that? Um, hit us in budget?
As, as early as January 1st, 2026. And again, I think it's all, all going to depend on what is, what is discovered. Uh, I'm confident in our position, but um, but we might have some classifications that may need some adjustment. We just have to see. Just of note, we won't be touching the sworn police or fire because. We're in a collective bargaining agreement that lasts until January of 2027, so. Any information we gather now, we couldn't use anyway, because we don't even start negotiations until next spring. Uh, that would be going to affect in 2027. Um, so, and we do them, we do them separately. But any classifications that we find that we're, you know, off in, that we'll try to adjust those, if we even have to phase in. If, if they give us, if the recommendation comes back for a, you know, big sandwich, we might have to take little bites and we just may have to phase this thing in. But we're going to do it with keeping as budget conscious as possible, uh, and keeping our position as competitive as we can.
And will that study provide um, an analysis of demographics? So for instance, um, you know, sometimes you find that paying women less than men, or will there, will that be a component or just an output?
From speaking with Bolton, they have some, uh, what they consider to be boilerplate demographic information that they put in there. Um, so I'll, I'll explore more about when, when they talk about. Um, because traditionally, they're just looking at the classification itself and not about who's in it. It's, it's not, it's not about the incumbent, it's about the position. Uh, but we can certainly have a conversation with them about um, how in depth they're going to go related to uh, differences of that sort.
Um, have we done that before? Just evaluated our pay?
We, we, we do it on an annual basis, evaluate pay in general. Uh, but this is just an opportunity. We're confident in the, again, we're confident in the work we do in HR. But this is the first uh, of this magnitude to be able to have a third party come in whose sole job is that. Uh, because I don't have an individual in my department that is a compensation professional or a compensation manager. Some, some do, and we are. Exploring maybe adding that or, or reclassifying a position to, to have someone do that because the certification for that. Uh, is about $10,000, a lot of work, uh, but we, we can invest in that if we see the need. Uh, but um, but yeah, that was the, that's where we're headed there.
Okay, I guess my um, question was more about have we looked to see if we're paying um, women and men equally in the organization?
Uh, we haven't done that specific study since I've been here. If that was done before, I'd have to check with my, my managers to see if they've looked at that. Uh, but um, but because we're looking at, I guess it's one of those, we're, because we're looking at the position, we haven't, we haven't taken that into consideration, any sort of. You know, how we're paying any races or genders. We're just looking at the, strictly the positions, the qualifications. Um, without regard for that, because we, we definitely, we didn't want anything to, you know, traditionally in HR, we don't want that to seep in. We don't want any sort of biases to seep in, any, either negatively or positively. We just want to look at it fairly across the board.
Well, that'd be a question if you could get it answered at some, you know, like if that's been done. Um, and then. Um, what is your experience with, and I've been asking this for several years now, it's just. When, you know, we have a pretty diverse workforce, but a pretty um, non diverse leadership um, group, so. How does that reflect on us or our hiring, or is that something that we should be trying to address?
Well, I think that's uh, one of the things we're always looking at is what, um, and that's why I mentioned earlier about everybody getting their position through merit, is that. We're trying to expand our talent pool and encourage folks from non traditional or diverse backgrounds to apply. Um, and could the numbers be better in our leadership? Absolutely. Uh, and I think that's just going to take just time and inertia. Uh, because when you're, when you're, when you have a certain makeup. Um, the only way you can change it overnight is to just, you know, tell some people to go. And, and so it's just going to take some time through attrition, uh, for us to, to then, and I think it's just a natural diversity is typically just a natural process, as long as you're not. Uh, closing the door on the front end, because I firmly believe opening the door on that end, and statistically speaking, you're going to end up with more diversity. If you just let more people through the door and reach those areas that you traditionally haven't been able to reach. We have to figure. We have to figure out, okay, so if we're, if we're missing certain, certain groups, how do we best target them? Is it, do we need to start advertising on podcasts? Is it put up, put up signs on the, on the side of the road that's allowable? Is it radio programs? Is it just, just what we're doing, which is our, our jobs push into indeed? Just finding out, LinkedIn, finding out where, where people are from different groups are looking at these, these positions.
And finally, my last question is, our benefit program, can you remind me what is provided for just the family leave option to staff?
Oh, for any sort of leave to deal with family issues? Well, we have, every January 1st, we give general employees 120 hours. That has no cash value, but it resets every January 1st, 120 hours. So, that right there is two weeks of sick leave right off the bat. We have major illness leave for the individual themselves where they can take, after the first 80 hours, they can take another 400 that the city pays for, for their own personal. And then for, for family, we also offer the FMLA, and they can use their paid leave, their vacation, or any sort of administrative leave or sick leave for that. That's the one, the one effort that we, where we don't have when it comes to the FMLA reasons that are not for the employee him or herself, that's, or themselves. That's where we have something that kind of falls through the cracks, if you will. We're looking at ways, what can we do to try to improve in that area for paid family leave if somebody's out of, out of their other allowances? Because otherwise, it would be unpaid, if that's what you're asking about, paid leave options.
I mean, I do believe when I was a staff member here, I had two kids, and each one, I had six weeks of paid leave for each one of them. So, I'm just curious if that's no longer a thing?
Paid leave for your?
I had six weeks of paid leave.
But did you have to burn your own? Oh, you mean for maternity?
Yeah.
Oh, we still have that.
You still have that?
Yeah, yeah, we still, I thought you meant just regular family illness. If you have a family member who is ill or a relative.
There was a whole bucket of, I, sorry, I grouped it in there.
Yeah, maternity is a separate, it's kind of a separate category, but we still have our same robust maternity leave program that you're referencing, Mayor Protem, but related to just if your child was sick. That's where we don't have any leave that is paid. We have, again, the major illness, the on-the-job injury, just regular sick leave, vacation leave, maternity leave. But we do not have, you know, family medical leave that is, now, folks can buy into, and we've had this debate here before, the council has, about the, the family program through the state of Colorado. People can purchase, employees can purchase that on the side, but we said we opted out because our benefits are actually better when it comes to that.
Except for the family.
That's the one that kind of, I mean, that kind of falls through the cracks, but if, but you can, you can use the leave that you have. And folks can, again, general employees can, can carry over up to 280 hours of vacation year to year. Start off the year with 120 hours of sick leave. Exempt employees can get 30 hours of exempt, so I'm sorry, 30 hours of administrative leave exempt employees can. And then department directors and vision managers can get 40. So, it's quite a bit of leave that folks can have in their banks to help with those efforts. But we are looking at ways that we can, because we have seen an uptick in the use of vacation leave and sick leave with our change in policies that were effective in 2024. So, what can we do to try to discourage folks from using that sick leave or vacation leave too much? Because it's, we're seeing our overtime go up, especially in public safety. So, what can we do? Can we put some of those leaves, instead of losing it, can they just put it into a bucket for the family issues? We're talking about that. It's very early in the, in the process.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No, you did a great job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Now go take a deep, deep breath, then relax.
Have any questions, let me know. I'll be glad to, Counselor Carmelia, if you have any benefits questions, I can send you our, some of our documents if you want, any, any of council, actually.
I didn't get my shot.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Counselor Demond.
There you are.
I'll be quick. I just was curious around the mental health stuff. I know we've added a substantial amount in my time. And so, I'm just curious if we're seeing folks use it? And, you know, there's, I know that we do a lot of work around public safety, which was initial push, part of the push that I made when I came on. But I want to make sure that, you know, other folks are encouraged to use that as well. And I know there's a lot of stigma that comes around that. So, I'm just curious, as we've added those services, have we seen them being used? And are we also seeing any potential roadblocks just from service providers being limited? Because I know, you know, through COVID and stuff, it was very hard to find people who were taking on patients. I'm just curious about how that's been going, and is that something that we need to look at expanding? Or, you know, do we feel like we have the right formula for folks?
Yeah, so you had a two-part question there. The first is employees are using it. We, and regarding providers, it's been especially helpful that they've gone virtual in a lot of cases for that. So, we have seen folks using it, especially through our employee assistance program where they get the, the free visits for different issues. They've been, they've been utilizing that. We have some good stats on that. We also have the Calm app, which is, we get that as part of our partnership with Aetna. So, we, we have a good, higher than what our target is on utilization for that as well. We have, in our fire department, we're looking, we've been doing a pilot program on brain code. And we're looking at maybe expanding that. Police department has expressed some interest in that. And then we're looking at if we expand it for the, for the whole city. That's some neurofeedback type, type stuff, you know, above my pay grade, but it's, it's supposed to be very good. That's wild. All right. I don't know who that guy was. So, we are looking at that, but we haven't had any issues. I think your, so your first question was, and yes, employees are using it, and we're trying to eliminate that stigma. And they can also get a referral. If they need to be referred, they can go through our employee wellness clinic or Center for, Center for Healthy Living, go through there. But we encourage folks to get seen, get help, and that's where we have our major illness leave if they need. And we have had some employees take advantage of that. If they, if a provider says they need some time, they can utilize any of the leave programs, including major illness leave, to get those issues seen about, even if it's just a medication adjustment, that sort of thing. We're, we're pretty progressive in that regard. We let folks take care of that because we know it's, it has been five years. It's been pretty tough. We understand that. We've had some, you know, and even just police and fire in their normal jobs, what they see. And so, that's why we're really targeting, targeting them. Because if you're gonna, if you're gonna roll something out, it's best to roll. To me, it's always been best to roll out with those types of organizations, the police and fire, the paramilitary, that see that kind of stuff, because if it works with them, it's probably going to work for the general population as well. And so, that was your first question about it's being used. And secondly, was the, was it just?
Access.
Access, provider availability? We haven't heard any complaints about, hey, I'm trying to get in and can't get seen. And I think it's because of the expansion to the virtual care. That, before that, that was an issue, that folks were having a hard time getting in. And it's also been, it was tough, you know, folks feel like they're chained to their desk and can't leave their office or can't leave the job site. But now that folks are able to pull up a provider on FaceTime or on Teams or Zoom, that's been measurably helpful. And so, but we, I've received no information back saying that we have an issue with provider availability. And I hope I don't ever hear from anybody that, that there's a stigma out there because I've utilized it. A lot of other people have too, and sometimes it's always good just to talk to somebody. Never hurts.
Glad to hear that. The last question I have, just as an organization, because, I mean, with our leadership, be it in, in the paramilitary, police, fire, or just across the organization, are we doing any training for our organization to look out for signs with their coworkers, with the public that we deal with? You know, there's just so many opportunities that we're going to run into it. And I know that the police and fire department, you know, they do those kind of trainings to know if that's something that they're dealing with. But are we doing that as an organization so that we're better at taking care of our own?
Absolutely. And yes, the public safety, they have kind of their own curriculum. But we've also put together, I have Andy Lied, my lead trainer, because I was familiar with the course before I got here, and I had him implement, and we have a mental health first aid that we've been offering. So, PRNL especially has really liked it. I think we've had some communities, community services folks participate. And that's, and that's helpful, not just for employee-to-employee interaction, but anybody who's public-facing. It's, it's really just, it kind of goes along with the class on dealing with difficult people is what it used to be called, or, or challenging customer service interactions, because it can help tamp those situations down. And again, it can prevent the, the mayor from getting phone calls, that sort of thing. But, but it's also about, we want to help people and meet them where they are. We want, we want to make sure they feel heard and seen and have a good positive interaction. And so, that's what that mental health first aid has, classes have done, Counselor Demond. So, I'm glad you asked that. That's been something that we're really proud of rolling out. We try to give that, you know, every, about every three or four months, we try to make that offering. It's not a very expensive class. There are lots of trainers in the Denver metro. And we wanted to do a train the trainer, actually, so we can just put it on in-house.
But lastly, I'll just say thank you for making sure that our people are taken care of so that we give the world-class service that our city does.
Oh, thank you.
I apologize for not looking at my list. Great questions. Thank you so much.
Yep, follow up with any, please email me if you have any other questions, counsel. Thank you very much, Mayor, Mayor Protem, counsel.
We need a five-minute break. Okay. Next up, Community Service Department budget presentation. Welcome.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, and councilors. I'm Lindsay Kimball, the Director of Community Services, and it is my honor to be with you here tonight. I must say, I, I probably can't go through this as quickly as my predecessor, Director Godfrey, who did a wonderful job. But I will do my best, and I will try to be brief, be bold, and be gone and out of your hair for this item. It's great to have this opportunity to share with you and the members of our community about the value created by the exceptional community services team. A little quick snippet about me. I have more than 25 years' experience in economic development planning, redevelopment, real estate place-making, deal-making, and other assorted related tangential fields there. I do have a certified economic developer certification through the International Economic Development Council, and that's the highest certification for economic developers. Proud to say we also have two other CECDs. One of them is, is with us in the room, Stephanie Troller. And another one, I'm sure is, is with us in spirit, watching from home. And also have an Economic Development Finance Professional certification from the National Development Council. I also served on the Board of Directors for the International Economic Development Council for eight years. Rolled off the board about two years ago and still greatly involved in that organization. I'm a trainer, a volunteer in disaster recovery, and an educator for them. Also, I have my MBA from the University of South Florida. and an educator for them. Also, I have my MBA from the University of South Florida, and also a BA in International Studies from the University of South Florida, where I'm concentrated in business and international economics. I joined the Westminster team almost three and a half years ago, and every day I wake up and I am excited to put my leadership abilities and experience to work for this great community. I have with me tonight several members of the Community Services Team, including our, almost the entire leadership team. There was a spring break going on, so folks are able to take some time off for that, and I'm glad that they are able to do that. I would like everyone in Community Services, if you could just raise your hand and let everyone know the team that is here. Hello, hello? Got several folks. I want to talk about specifically, I will, I want to introduce everyone quickly, but on our leadership team, you all know Bridger Tomlin. He is a direct report to me, our Sustainability Administrator. Just want to share, he is a Colorado native. He's been with the city for five years now, and he's dedicated his entire career to advancing sustainability through the public sector. Prior to joining the city, Bridger got his Master's in Environmental Management, focusing on urban resilience and sustainability from the University of Colorado at Boulder. He also holds a Bachelor of Arts in Environmental Studies and History from Bowdoin College in Maine. And it's amazing to work with Bridger. We'll learn more tonight about the activities that he is engaged in. Next, I want to talk about Sam Everett, Samantha Everett, who is our Chief Building Official, and she also has stepped up to the challenge, and I'm very grateful to her because she's also our Acting Manager, Division Manager of Community Preservation. So she has been wearing two hats and doing an amazing job. And by the way, being, you are coming up on your year anniversary with the city, and we're very pleased, made a great choice in hiring Sam. She's been amazing and a powerhouse. She has 23 years of experience, and 10 of those serving as a Chief Building Official. She also holds a very impressive 15 certifications from the International Code Council. She has a practical, common-sense approach. She's very collaborative, and she does all that while still not ever compromising the safety of her residents. So I thank her for her hard work and stepping up over the past four months, as I said, to take over a whole other division. Thank you. Next, I want to introduce to you to Stephanie Troller. She is our Economic Development Division Manager, and she has over 20 years of experience in a diverse range of economic development practices and programs. She is a Certified Economic Developer through the IEDC. She has a great focus on strategic planning and neighborhood revitalization. She holds a Bachelor's Degree in International Business from New Mexico State, and also a Master's of Public Administration from the University of Colorado Denver. And thank you, Stephanie, and we're going to learn more about her and her team today as well. Next, I want to introduce you to John McConnell. He has 21 years as a public servant and planning professional. He is an AICP, so an American Institute of Certified Planners certified. That's a great honor for planners to have that bestowed upon them and to earn that designation. So congratulations, John. He holds a Bachelor of Arts from the University of Alabama in Geography and GIS. And he has been with the Planning Division with the City of Westminster for over nine years now. Thank you, John. Finally, Heather Kornberg, who you all know as our Real Estate Development Manager. She is on spring break, and we wish her well tonight. In her stead, we have some of her folks that you know as well, Mona Chori, who has been with the city for 21 years, amazing, and John Van, who's been with the city for eight years, amazingly talented gentleman as well, and has been in his profession for 40 years doing parks and landscape and capital projects. Heather, as you know, has been in the real estate field for quite a while, over 25 years, serving public, private, and nonprofit sectors. She holds a Real Estate Broker's License with the state of Colorado, and manages all of our real estate transactions. She currently sits on the ULI Women's Initiative Steering Committee, so taking a leadership role there. And also have several folks, as you saw, with me. My Executive Assistant Dawn is here. Thank you for the moral support, Dawn Aglar. Katie Curry. I believe I saw Sarah Steer in the audience as well, and I want to introduce Matt Brandon, Economic Development, and Vivian Delivier, who is also with our Economic Development Team. And hopefully I didn't miss anyone, so good. Okay. All right. I'd also like to recognize the Acting City Manager tonight and my boss Larry Dorf, for his leadership and mentorship. His energy, creativity, and prosperity mindset are infectious, so if you ever need to pick me up, just, that's the guy to talk to you right there. We'll all tell you that. I also want to thank him for coining the term, but I got to tell you, Larry, that the team has really, really taken to heart. And I believe one Monday night recently, you called CS a juggernaut. Now that really, that struck a great chord for the team. I think we appreciated that. We liked being called a juggernaut. So we are a great, very large group doing a wide array of services and responsibilities, so it was a great term to coin. And though I know he's on vacation tonight, I also want to thank City Manager Andrews for hiring me and for being truly visionary and really just being a paragon, in my opinion, of building partnerships and identifying shared interests to get to a mutually beneficial conclusion. So want to thank them and thank all of you. And let's get started. All right. So the Community Services Department. I took the pictures that I used in this presentation, I must tell you, very seriously. I think pictures are very important. They, of course, you know, say a thousand words in one photo. And I really hemmed and hawed about what photo I was going to use for. How do I represent this entire department that does so many really cool things and does so many things to keep our community safe and sustained and economically vibrant and successful and aesthetically pleasing and all these wonderful things? And I kept landing on this photo. And the reason why is what I see in this photo, I see, number one, smiling faces, which is always good. I see action going on. You know, you've got some heavy equipment, buildings coming down. We've got boots on the ground, hard hats, heavy equipment. But it also shows the private sector partners with us. It shows our elected officials. You know, I see the Mayor and Counselor Ireland. Thank you for being there that day. This was actually a photo from the deconstruction of the former bank building in downtown. I see our partners in other departments. Attorney Frankel is there and with a hard hat, or not hard hat, but that's okay. He was living dangerously that day. And we also have, you know, our promise of the future, and this is an action moment. So I also think this picture represents everything that it took to get to this point. So it took, what, it took planning, it took a building permit, deconstruction permit. Thank you, Sam. It took a lot of planning and engagement. It took community engagement. We talked to all of the residents in downtown and around there, and the businesses, and the businesses over on Harlan and downtown, and get them engaged so that nobody wonders, what's going on? What are they doing? And it's also an investment. So this picture represents an investment in the future. We all kept a brick from that day to symbolically represent the former bank building, but also it was a really great time to think about what's coming next and the fact that this is unlocking that really highly visible corner for redevelopment, for a more attractive entrance, and preparing it for the next investment and the next iteration of what that site's going to be. So that was my, you know, my purpose for this photo is to really emphasize the broad spectrum that it takes to get to a point like this, where we're celebrating. Takes a lot of hard work. We plan, we execute, we maintain our standards so that the future is bright for everyone in Westminster. And I've told the story before, you probably heard it, that when I first visited Westminster, I was driving in in a rental car from DIA, and I knew instantly when I entered the City of Westminster. And not just because there was a giant sign on 36 that said Westminster, and I thought, wow, that's so nice. That's beautiful. But there's a clear change in the aesthetics, the design standards, the planning principles that you see being brought to reality. And what this means to us as a team is that, you know, our business is to translate community values into the built environment and the local economy. So just think about that for a minute with me, that, you know, how do you get something so esoteric as a community value and translate that into a space where people are going to live and work and play? And how do you get to that? How many steps in the process are there? There's a lot, and there's a lot that goes on behind the scenes to make sure that people are safe and healthy, and, you know, we're going to, we're going to get into that with the different divisions, but it's just, it's so much to get to a point of something that can be taken for granted and to be seen as just kind of happens by a happy accident, but it's not. It took a lot of really good decisions, strong leadership from folks like you and staff to implement. And also, you know, we've got just a wide-ranging collection of responsibilities and skills. You know, but like I said, at the end of the day, it's about translating the community's values into that environment that they live in, in their local economy. So my team is affecting people's daily lives through essential core local government services, the bread and butter of local government like land use and zoning, development regulations, code enforcement, job opportunities, and safe buildings for people to live in. Our team, as I said, ensures the health, safety, and welfare of residents, their economic prosperity, and their property values, which is a serious concern. You want to make sure that we're able to maintain our standards of the city and continue to have investment. We believe we align with every one of the strategic plan elements there. Access to opportunities, that's jobs. We oversee housing, execution of your housing policy, connections and conveners to the business environment and buy-in between the residents and the business community. Also, for community health and safety, our sustainability program is very robust. We have code enforcement, rental housing inspections, building codes, inspection of buildings, all contributing to that community health and safety. Economic vitality, of course, economic diversification, workforce development, small business support, and a continued investment in the community. And resilient infrastructure through our planning processes and our investment and attraction of new private investment, we are always making sure there's a concurrency of infrastructure with our planning and with allowable development so that there's a proper location of development, not just timing, but the location is in the right place, and that development's paying for itself. We also have collaboration, industry professional leadership, certification, training, support, and advancement along those lines. You just heard our HR Director Godfrey talk about organizational vitality. I hope everyone knows on my team, you know, I'm very supportive of training, education, and bettering yourself. So we're very supportive of that. We've invested this budget cycle in enhanced training for specifically building and community preservation departments to help them get acclimated to the new code, which was recently adopted. So there were some training needs there, and of course, I'm happy to support that. So Community Services Budget and Staffing, we have five divisions, five division managers, and administration, which is myself, my assistant, and a senior management analyst, so very, very lean and mean. And we are always on the move. There's a saying, I believe, with a gentleman who started a large furniture company, but we cannot become what we need to be by remaining what we are. So even between the time of adoption of this budget and presenting to you tonight, we have had changes, and we continue to change. So one of the big ones, I just want to point out, because this will be throughout the presentation, but it is what it is, because that's, the budget book has been printed. And the sustainability element you see in real estate and development, I have moved that effective August of last year to report directly to me. So now it's myself, Executive Assistant, Senior Management Analyst, and Bridger Tomlin, Sustainability Administrator Powerhouse, and he has an intern, a sustainability intern that reports to him as well. So we have all those folks in administration. Really wanted to elevate that sustainability conversation, to report directly to the Director of the Department. I thought it was very important that that happened and be elevated. I want to also point out, besides the fact that we are not standing still, and on every slide I will tell you what's already kind of changing and moving around to respond to market needs and your policy direction, is the fact that they, we have been holding the line with our staffing. You will notice in FY '24 and FY '25, Authorized FTEs have not changed. We have always, I have always leaned into purposefully creative repurposing, whether that's through reclassification, realigning staff. Staff attrition happens naturally, as Davey said as well, and we've looked at every single one of those changes as an opportunity. So, okay, stop. Do we need to keep doing what we were doing before? Yes, no? Okay, well, if no, then what do we need to do? Who needs help right now? Because we're all on the same team, and there has been just quite, there hasn't, there is not one division that hasn't changed or hasn't had a position change or morph or become something to respond to the needs that we're hearing from this body. So I want to really emphasize that. I really thank the team, and I especially thank HR, because every time they see me, I think they want to run the other way, because I want to reclass something or move somebody or change assignments, reporting, and so forth. But, you know, like I said, you got to, you got to keep moving, you got to keep changing to keep progressing. So it's what we do. We take it very seriously. We also do that because we're mindful. You know, I'm here almost every meeting and definitely take to heart the fact that we need to be fiscally responsible, and the last thing that I really want to do is ever to ask for an increase in FTE. So I just want to share that with you, and I've communicated that to my team as well. You know, so we are very aggressive about looking at contractors, AI, definitely, computers. I'm like, I always ask, is there a computer software program that can do this? Do we have to do this? So always thinking about ways that we can be more efficient. And we've also held line on budget. You'll notice, and may have a question, what happened between '23 and '24? Those 20 FTEs were when engineering, former city manager had moved engineering out of CD, then community development, and they went over to public works and utilities. So that was the reduction of the 20 FTEs. Those were the engineering folks that went over to public works. And then we've held line with the consolidation in '24. That represents 14.5 FTEs from economic development and 56.5 from community services. Is the combined number of 71 FTEs that you see there represented for FY '24 and FY '25. And on personnel and overall budget, the total number there of 11.9 million, our total operating budget increase from '24 to '25 was 5.7%, and that's a real number of 640, about $642,000. We also are proud of that because we are actually less than the overall increase of 9.5% of the overall city operating budget. So that's a benchmark that we just try to use for some comparison. Now, there's reasons why things increase more. Some have more commodities that have just increased naturally that we have no control over. But just for context, you know, we have tried to hold the line and try to stay under the overall increase numbers. And again, you know, we like to be resourceful, we outsource, we're thrifty. Really quickly, about these 71 really talented people that are amazing, and I'm very grateful that I've been able to lead the consolidation of the two departments last year. Been able to meet a lot of really fascinating, interesting, talented, wonderful people. And I will be able to tell you a little bit about some of them tonight, but in these 71 FTEs, you can find more than 1,150 years of experience, or that would bring you back to the year 875 in the time of Charlemagne, I guess, and the Viking raids. So whenever we do a length of service lunch, and Jody likes to remind us how much consolidated time is sitting in the room, and we usually only get back to like 1650 or so. So I'm very proud of my team, going back to 875. And we have some of the most longest-serving dedicated staff, and we'll dive deeper into that through the slides. But again, we build or maintaining, we're sustaining community through proper planning, economic development, modern building standards, preservation of property standards, and safety, for the attraction of private development. And that cycle is constantly turning. Like I said, we don't want to be stagnant. We don't want to be stagnant with how we do our work. Don't want to be stagnant with how we respond to folks. And we are a team of collaborators and conveners and executors. And we operationalize the vision and expectation of the residents for their life and their future, into the physical environment they inhabit, and the economic opportunities that are available to them. um, into the physical environment they inhabit and the economic opportunities that are available to them. Okay, so the administration division, as I said, um, the the numbers that you're going to see reflect the budget book um, that was put together prior to many changes. Um, we do now have uh, sustainability. So you can add an uh, FTE to that uh, three number now. And uh, the reason for the decrease um, is that we had um, originally there was a concept with the former uh, director in CD and wanted to have all um, administrative functions reporting directly to the director. Um, you know, it just, it wasn't um, wasn't my style. I wanted folks to be out in the divisions and to be supporting the needs of specific divisions based on their job functions. And then also um, have a common function within the department to tie them universally to everyone and be supportive universally of everyone. Um, so it relieves the director of uh, direct reports, which is good, because should be very focused. Um, and it it moved, we also had some planners who were reporting to the director at the time, uh, running um, the permit desk with several other divisions. Um, that was moved back to the planning uh, department that you'll see reflected in their numbers. And um, as you know, the permit desk has physically moved downstairs to the first floor lobby. It's wonderful. It's working out very well for us. Um, and it's it's able to allow greater collaboration by having all of the divisions responsible for certain days and functions of that. So um, there's there's greater community interaction and community service being given to folks by having it um, spread across the department. So that just explains uh, some of that information um, regarding the FTEs and how we went from four point five to eight to three. Um, there was a method to that madness. And um, the budget, as you as you can probably guess, because of the uh, dramatic decrease in staff, the budget went down dramatically in the admin department. But as I said, um, those folks went back to the planning division um, to perform their services. And um, I also added uh, sustainability back in. So there was a little bit of um, an up and a down there, but um, this will be stable, projected to be stable for FY twenty six and not needing any additional resources. Um, you know, for our function in the administrative division and our priorities, um, you know, we really my my role as director, any director, translating the direction and policy from this body and the city manager into our own practical operations as efficiently as we can, uh, is our main driver. We're supporting the entire department. Um, communicating their needs as well up to city leadership, so that they're heard and they have a voice. Um, a lot of my focus is, you see in these bullet points, has been on strong, steady, consistent leadership that supports the staff. Um, strengthening a culture of professionalism, community engagement and process improvement. Um, that goes down to even um, you know, having the right, having the right gear for the job, having the right safety equipment, asking, asking people who haven't been asked in a while. Um, do you have everything you need to do your job? Um, we, I've done a lot of that, a lot of um, forums with staff, one-on-ones with staff throughout the entire department, um, learning about their needs and maybe changes that they would like to see. So trying to be a sounding board and being open to them. I think is very important. Um, as I said, training, equipment, safety, communicating. We've started um, last year, um, our our year anniversary of being consolidated was in uh, beginning of this month in March. March fourth was officially consolidation day for us. Um, so we started that month with a uh, a monthly newsletter for staff to talk about all things going on with staff, building that camaraderie, building the collaboration, um, feeling of of team in the department. And a focus, I have been very focused on uh, breaking down silos um, within divisions, even though it it can sound kind of crazy that you're in the same department, but and you might sit right next to somebody, but you won't, you're not talking to them or you're not collaborating or something like that. So we work really hard to um, to break those down. And I think we've been really successful. Um, we've had several, I like to call them the A-team or the action teams that we get together. We pull one person from economic development, one person from planning, one person from building, one person from codes. And let's help this project um, get to the finish line. Let's figure out what's going on, what's the holdup? Are there, is there any information that we can help? And there's been so many aha moments um, with staff. It's it's just been really neat to see and um, the smiles and the camaraderie's been, I think, a lot stronger. So I'm very, I'm very proud of the team. Um, we also have been working with the clerk's office um, on uh, streamlining of business licensing along with our our finance team friends and fire inspection and um, public works in certain cases with fog and and so forth. Um, needs and stormwater. We've been looking at a way to um, you know, eliminate holes in what I like to call the Swiss cheese model, the the theory of, you know, you might have one block for something, but you put another piece of Swiss cheese, there might be a little bit of a hole where somebody's going to get through. And you know, you might issue a business license, but maybe they didn't have a sprinkler system in the building. Maybe they weren't in the right zoning. Maybe they weren't uh, you know, licensed properly to do what they're doing. So there was a lot of um, when I say holes in the Swiss cheese. So we were um, trying to find more ways and more redundancy and we have worked really closely with Abby and her team. And we're um, approaching, I think, launching uh, that new process and and being able to have um, a Swiss free cheese model that will not allow people to to slip through without a business license or a sales tax license or a liquor license, you know, God forbid, um, doing that and not having a license. So uh, we are working on that. And the last one there is really important um, to me and the whole team knows this. But we are evaluating all of our fees in um, community services. Uh, it's it's pretty shocking. Um, there are some that haven't been updated since nineteen ninety eight that we found. And um, some mostly around the uh, twenty teens, early, early two thousands. Um, so that's a great deal of time. There's been a lot of inflation and um, these aren't fees where we're just making a fee up to have a fee, but they're based on the actual time that staff spends on things that are driven by the development community mostly. So the CPR that you heard tonight, that took staff time to write that memo, that took staff time to do the presentation and talk to the applicant and have a pre-app meeting. We're not charging for eh, we're not charging for any of that. There's not even a fee set up for that yet. So there's opportunities to have fees where um, you know, of course, we're going to bring this all back to this body, but I just wanted to give you a preview. Last year, we collected seven point one million in fees. If we just took into consideration inflation, uh, that number should probably be more like nine million dollars. Uh, based on the actual time, the cost of staff time. Um, and again, this isn't about um, you know, overburdening residents. It's about people who are coming to us and, you know, very, we're glad they're coming to us. But it creates a work and a review and it's primarily in planning and building and so forth. And even looking at our code enforcement, stacking fines. Um, when's the last time that those have been looked at and increased? Um, so we're going to look at everything. Um, it would be really neat. Um, I don't think we're going to get there, but um, seven point one million last year collected in all of our fees and again, haven't been updated in a while. Um, our overall operating budget you saw was eleven million. That would be great if we could break even. Imagine a hundred percent cost recovery. So that's something that I get really excited about. I try to run it like a business, so that would be exciting um, to be able to do. So I wanted to share, that's one of our overarching goals. Also, we shared with ELT and Jody last week at our ELT meeting, um, that is one of community services overarching goals. All right. So getting into the divisions, uh, economic development. Um, of course focused on attraction and uh, tonight you're going to hear an executive session about uh, potential expansion of a large employer in our community as one example. Um, they also are supporting small businesses, um, working on increasing incomes and opportunities for all of our residents. Um, and building a healthy economy in order to have a healthy community. So you'll you'll keep hearing me say this throughout this presentation, but you know, a job leads to self-sufficiency, dignity, you can afford your home, you're supporting your family, you're able to invest and maintain your property. Um, that has all of those um, you know, exogenous effects of helping um, reduce crime, um, improve the look of the entire neighborhood. Um, people are able to have time, they're not overly stressed about where their next meal is coming from, because now they have a job. They can then um, get involved in the community and invest and be participating um, in building a community. So we really take this seriously that um, building healthy communities um, starts with a healthy economy. And um, you know, it's it's pretty much as simple as that. And creating that stable diversified tax revenue base for our city um, so that we can do all of these other important core services uh, in the community, like libraries and parks and um, programs for for children and um, roads. Uh, you know, all those things um, are because we've we've been able to build a stable economy and a stable tax base. Uh, but we can't ever, you know, let our eye off the ball, um, in my opinion. You have to keep um, the investment coming, keep your businesses happy. And that's what Stephanie and her team do every day and do a wonderful job. Um, they also are focused on small business support. So small business is, you know, the backbone of our our country and um, they do a great job partnering with folks like the SBDC, the Chamber on providing those training opportunities and supporting that. And finally, this division is responsible for um, our housing, focusing on balanced housing and housing strategies for preserving, protecting and developing affordable housing. Um, and as I said, they they cultivate strong relationships with very um, high level external partners in our business community um, through various means. And you will see here, there's blanks on this um, graph, because of course, there wasn't before in the economic development department, which had um, became two divisions in this new community services department. Um, did not exist. We were all just kind of in one bucket, because it was fourteen people. There wasn't really a a reason to get that specific and divide it up into a bunch of different codes. Um, so we kept it simple. Uh, but now with the bigger department, it makes sense to, of course, break that out. And um, just so you know, the seven point one is is stable, stable employment. Um, we also um, in that repurposed, a great example of repurposing that I want to share is we created um, Vivian's position, who's here with us tonight. I'm, we're very glad she's here. She is a known um, housing policy, housing administration rock star in the region. And um, she, her position was created by the repurposing of the former uh, community development director position. So we took a director level position. We saw a need um, hearing from this this body and created a new um, housing administrator position to report to Stephanie and her team and managing our community development block grant program, our federal home funds, um, private activity bond funds to help with housing. And because we knew we needed to get um, some more horsepower in that area. So that's um, in my mind, a great example of how we've repurposed a very high level position to allow us to create um, another position in our department that was needed with the needed skills and responsibilities to address our current needs. Also um, had a significant cost savings and um, were also able to to repurpose and reclassify different positions where we didn't have to add a whole new FTE. Um, giving someone slightly additional duties and a slight increase, a modest increase in pay was more cost effective than having to come and ask for an FTE. And the rev, it was revenue, it was net neutral, because we had that such a high level director position that was repurposed. So it was a wash and we actually left some money on the table, if, for what it's worth. Okay, um, again, this slide, the table's not very interesting, but the picture's beautiful. And that's a historic Westminster, Seventy Third there. Um, I also put on there a shop small logo. Um, Stephanie and her team are amazing at working with our small business community. Um, and overall, I will tell you, you don't have the 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 other years filled in here, but just knowing from when we we did the merger of the departments, this personnel contractual services and commodities is um, stable. The only thing increasing there, there was about a six percent increase, mostly in natural increases um, in personnel costs, medical expenses and things like that. That went up for the entire city, so um, not anything major. I would consider that a stable uh, budget, stable staffing. And um, you know, I I use this picture, as I said, I love pictures. And this one in particular um, highlights the work that Stephanie and her team do very closely. One-on-one, on the ground, boots on the ground, of going door to door to door. Um, some of you have been on those biz walks, um, but it really important to have those personal connections to historic Westminster and the businesses there. And um, Stephanie and her team do an amazing job with that. She's built very strong community connections and that shop small logo is um, part of our ethos and 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 community value that we like to promote. Um, because these small business owners, you know, the Flag Shop and Creative Corner, um, Little Bits when it was 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 there, you know, um, that's what really gives the community an authentic um, persona. Uh, it's it's not the chains. We love the chains. We love Trader Joe's. We're glad that they're coming. Don't get me wrong, um, we love our Costco, but it's these little um, littler, smaller businesses. Um, the CPR was very interesting tonight. That is is honestly something that's needed from an economic development perspective, to have folks be able to launch out of their garage. It's, that's, you know, we were kind of joking, but that is true, that that interim space is is a needed um, commodity. So that was really exciting. And um, you know, we're all about supporting through scholarships for small businesses to take trainings. If we're not offering the training, our partners don't offer it, um, grants. We recently, Stephanie and her team have been so active, working with the folks, um, Center Point, Center Point, Center Plaza, on a hundred twenty, Center Point? Uh, Center Point Retail, excuse me, um, center there, um, where they've had some increased crime activity. Um, so Stephanie and her team, and I think um, members of this body, actually went on that tour with um, our police department folks. And uh, were able to make some safety suggestions and we put together, Stephanie put together very quickly, a uh, a grant program based on safety needs for small businesses. So that's been um, well received and utilized and that's available to any business in the city. Um, so very proud of that. And um, you know, we're talking about years of experience. Well, there's a hundred and thirteen years of economic development experience uh, on Stephanie's team. As I said, three certified economic developers. Um, and um, want to point out, very proud of Stephanie Audi. We have many Stephaneys, but Stephanie Audi uh, in a leadership role, um, always encourage folks to take leadership roles throughout the community. Um, she is co-chair of Crew Denver, that's Commercial Real Estate Women of Denver, and uh, co-chair for them. So very proud of her taking that leadership role. And um, looking towards the future in twenty twenty five, of course, um, further business recruitment efforts. And um, we are going to hear about one of those tonight. Uh, we also providing ongoing assistance and advocacy for local small businesses. Uh, recruiting, as I said, unique retailers and destination entertainment. So destination entertainment are those maybe larger formats, um, opportunities that are are fun. Maybe they do serve food. It's um, you know, something where where you can come and bring the family. Maybe it's a team building exercise. Um, any sort of things uh, that can bring people from outside of the community into our community, spending money, generating sales tax revenue. So again, it's the whole wheel and cycle where we can generate sales tax. Um, it's great when it comes from other areas, not just from our residents. We're able to attract new revenue and fuel our economy and also be able to provide the services that our residents expect. And we have the funds to do that. Um, also Stephanie and your team are working really hard on the adaptive reuse of the historic Rodeo Market Building. And um, you will hear soon about that. We actually have, um, she's written an info only memo um, that will be coming to you um, soon. And um, I believe in in uh, two weeks, you'll be receiving that. It'll be an update on that market uh, building. And um, implementation of the housing needs assessment recommendations. As I said, with Vivi joining our team and our CDBG efforts and the the team in place that Stephanie has, we're very excited about um, bringing back to you this summer, um, some of those recommendations in way that that this body could take actions to affect um, items in that housing needs assessment. Also, um, developing with community input, the new CDBG consolidated plan. That's our five-year plan. Um, also simultaneously, you know, every year we do an annual action plan update. Um, this is the big five-year plan. Uh, so we're doing a lot of community outreach, a lot of community engagement. You saw um, Acting City Manager Dorit spoke about a meeting coming up um, in the next week or so, where um, we're going to be at City Park Rec and having a community meeting about CDBG. That'll be our second meeting um, so far on that subject. And um, furthermore, you know, we've been excited. Last year we kicked off what we were calling seventy-three L, Seventy Third and Lowell uh, with the Jazz Party. We had a lot of great turnout for that and the team is planning more activity. With the Jazz Party, we had a lot of great turnout for that and the team is planning more activities. With the community liaisons and letting them guide the mission of what they want to see and have at that site. So again, lots of community engagements. We're also continuing to support the development of additional affordable housing units. Your second executive session tonight will be about. A potential affordable housing and which will include a Head Start program. In our city with Maker Housing, so that'll be tonight during an executive session as one example. And as I said, the team is managing all of our federal resources that we get formulaically from the federal government through HUD. The CDBG Home and Private Activity Bonds. They conduct market research, as you saw, with the Housing Needs Assessments and our business assessments, our retail strategy. We're very aggressive. As I said, Stephanie Audi is very involved in our Crew Denver. But she also, it's amazing, knows, you can ask her about any any retail center in the city. She knows the owner. Who manages that, who the broker is, which is great. You you, that's what you need. You need somebody who knows the people. And so when we, you know, we we love answering the emails that we get from council or residents. What's going on there? What's what's this about? You know, what's how's it going on? What's the inside scoop? That we have folks who just pick up the phone, call the owner, they find out what's going on and we can get you an answer quickly. So. Again, just really proud of of that group. Thank you. Community Services Next Division Up Planning Division, led by John McConnell. Want to direct your attention first to the authorized FTE line there. So you you do notice it goes up and down and the consolidation happened in twenty twenty four. So let me let me explain a little bit about what's what's going on here. As I said, there are three planning positions that were moved to report directly to the director. In twenty three, so that plus the movement of. Another planner from a different division netted out to a decrease in ten for planning. When I became director, I reversed that course and asked for the planners to report directly to the planning manager. Not the director and found this, we found this to be very much more efficient and it's it's been working out. So. I just wanted to give a just a brief explanation for why you're going from twelve to ten to thirteen. That's what was what was going on there, but expect that to be stable in twenty six for sure. There are nearly two hundred years of planning experience here and we have four. AICPs, which are the great highest accreditation for planners. And we're very proud of our team for investing in themselves and being able to bring that experience to bear to for us. We also have. Western Planner President's Award for our Comprehensive Plan that was adopted last year. And also very proud of Recent Merit Award from the American Planning Association Colorado Chapter and. We are welcoming for the first time, I believe, in twenty years, the APA, the American Planning Association. Having their conference in Denver. I want to really give a a big thank you to Andrew Spurgeon, who you all know. Amazing, amazing long term planner, but very involved in APA and he was able to win through a competitive process. We're going to be hosting a tour. Actually, he he won on two accounts, right? One, two, three, two, okay, two accounts to get a mobile tour to Westminster so that people from around. The country, around the world will be able to take this bus tour and learn from us at Westminster. So. Really proud of the work that Andrew has done on this project. It's a big deal to have the conference here. It doesn't happen. It's like a comet. It only comes every twenty or thirty years by and you need to take advantage of it and I'm I'm so excited. We get to showcase. What our city has done. I'm really proud of that. And like I said, we have a tour on Saturday on on Historic Westminster. And we have a tour about our major redevelopment areas of downtown and West East Station on Sunday. So. Just want to share that with you that we'll have, you know, a couple hundred people touring our community and and learning. About the great work that the Planning Department has done, Plan Division. Our budget here for this division is again, stable. That personnel number is really what drove the increase and that was again, just flipping really quick, three additional staff. FTEs moved again, nothing at the high level, no net new. This is all internally moving around and making changes, but not increasing the size of the department. And we also are. Working on keeping these costs down, but as I said, there will be a lot of those fees to evaluate, potentially new. Things to look at, new things we haven't done in the past of ways to recoup some of these personnel expenses. And potential reductions in contractual services. So we see those as maybe opportunities for definitely opportunities. In this year and for FY twenty six. You know, and as as you all know, Lingus and Tony, as I said, is is one of the most personal aspects of local government. It affects people's daily lives. It affects the aesthetics. It can affect their, what they see in their backyard every day. As you know, when you're hearing these these items, it can change people's view corridors. So it really has a large, great impact and the city has had just a tremendous history of. High quality planning that I think we all can be proud of and this team has is committed to continuing that tradition. And focusing on redevelopment and looking at how we can continue to have investment and help people who. Current property owners that would like to make improvements to their properties. So we're we're shifting gears from, we're not a greenfield community in planning. We are definitely in redevelopment mode. There's not a lot of open space left. So we need to be very good stewards of what we have and look at those little nuggets of opportunity. Throughout the city where we can look at additional investment. All right, and our priorities. And there was a question earlier, I know, about Front Range Passenger Rail Update. Want to answer that immediately. It'll be on April twenty first. Chris Chauvin from our team will be presenting. About that and we'll make sure that we'll be updating him tomorrow on the comments tonight. So I just wanted to to let you know that because I know we've got that as one of our top priorities, a continued coordination. With our external partners on Peak Rail, Front Range Passenger Rail and Federal Boulevard, the RT. Also looking at continued implementation of the recently adopted twenty forty comp plan. We do have some cleanup updates. They're they're very basic. They're things like small annexations that people have asked for. We need to update a map in the comp plan or there's been a a change approved by this body. So it needs to be reflected in the plan. So. Look for that in in summer. We're looking to come with a cleanup, some cleanup amendments, very basic perfunctory things. And also we are going to have a report because within our comprehensive plan, we did commit to providing. Every two year updates on progress of the metrics. And I know a lot of folks who are here tonight on this board were part of that and creating some of those metrics. So. We have collected those and we're prepared to provide that in a info only memo shortly. Also, cities landscape regulations and code to support neighborhoods and HOAs, Stephanie Ashman. Many Stephaneys in this department, but Stephanie Ashman, who you probably know, an amazing planner and very talented and has a passion. For helping folks have sustainable landscaping and has really gone above and beyond. She'll be coming to you to. Provide information on the work that she's done with four HOAs so far. It's also open to, you don't have to be an HOA. It can be. A homeowner, anyone, you know, who would look to be more water wise. We are happy to support that and we've got some tools that make it very easy for folks, especially the larger property owners who might need to do. An ODP amendment or something like that, that can seem scary and just impossible to to do. It's very. You know, it it can be discouraging to see that, but she's kind of done all the late work and even done some of the planning. Work with one of our planners and you can just kind of pick one off the rack and say, I want to do this and you're good to go. Also, as you know, updating sign codes will be next next week, next week, next Monday. We have a. Agenda item on that to update primarily cleaning up for new technologies such as when you go through a drive through. Most of the the sign boards that you people are changing physically. It is a, it is a video screen. And we are, we need to update that because right now technically that's not allowed to have a video. But that's where we know everyone is gone. So it's things like that. We are trying to be language access compliant and friendly. And we are working on revamping the Spanish language translation signs that we received great feedback on. At the last meeting, so we're happy to to go back and redesign those and as well, as I said, helping with our redevelopment. Next up, want to talk about the Building Division. Sam Evert is our Chief Building Official. I introduced her. This is one of the coolest divisions. I mean, you're you're all wonderful, but I I know I'm getting looks. But this has been fascinating to learn more about as I've taken over this role. There's three hundred and fifty years of experience with these sixteen folks in this division. And it's because, as I've I've met them and talked with them, just amazing dedication to their field. We have so many people who are. Forty years in the field, thirty years with the city, fifty years in their their trade. And it's an amazing wealth of knowledge. So I'm really, really proud of them. They've got numerous certifications. I can't list them all. The Colorado Chapter of International Code Council, we're very, team is very involved in. You know, Jessica Arvanitis, for example, serves as a member of the Code Development Committee. She's been doing that for three years. Lindsay Bredzel, who is a permit technician. She's the Director of the Colorado Association of Permit Technicians. So she holds a statewide leadership role. And I got to tell you, I have been getting some of the best compliments about the customer service experience in permit. Technician interfacing, hearing it from large corporations, from individuals, people spontaneously writing. Notes, emails and thank yous, which are very rare to get, you know, you hear probably ten bad things before you hear a good thing. And it's just the way it works. I mean, nobody really likes to come get a permit. But these folks have found unlocked the secret sauce and just very friendly, very kind, patient. People there at our permit counter, if you see them on the first floor here. So I'm very proud of them. Keep up the great work and. Sam, as I said, has prioritized investment in the people. We're updating certifications where we adopted the code, the twenty twenty one code last year. And you know, there's a lot of things people need to get up to speed on and the energy code and so forth. So. Sam's really doing a great job to get folks trained appropriately. She's also streamlined the reporting structures of the division in her her year that she's been here. So it's been great. The Building Division are are unsung heroes and if you can guess who this gentleman is, it's not Larry Dorr. In this picture, but it's.
Of course it isn't. It's not the matter of.
It's not Jody. This is Dan Bradford, who is amazing supervisor in the Building Division. He is the gentleman who has fifty one years of experience in the field, started construction at fourteen. And thirty two years with the city. So thank you, Dan. He helped me get some of these action shots for this presentation tonight. They really are unsung heroes. There's. You know, they don't have very many agenda items coming from this division, except every three years when we adopt a new code, pretty much, or or doing something like that. So but they don't get a lot of headlines and I just want to say they're they're critical to the health, safety and welfare of the community. The structural integrity of buildings, the sanitary conditions, maintaining property values for all of us, preventing deterioration. And enhancing the quality of life overall in the city. I'm very proud of that work that they're doing. This budget, you can see, we had some ups and downs here. Do you want to explain that? We had some folks move in twenty three. The Rental Housing Inspection Team. Moved from the Building Division to the Community Preservation Division. That resulted in a reduction of FTEs. The budget, however, I will say, in in conference with our our Budget Administrator Erin Fariter. You know, we've talked about it and it seems that because there were some vacancies at the time and different things moving around and consolidation. That number was probably art, it was artificially low based on our actuals for twenty four. So the twenty twenty five budget. You see a little dip in twenty four, but really it's it's a flat budget. There haven't been any increases. It's been very steady. As you can see, the numbers are almost exactly the same for contractual and commodities. So again, we're we're trying to hold line. And trying to find ways to be efficient without increasing. All right, so our priorities are to refine our standard operating procedures. For the Building Service Counter. We're very excited. We love our new Building Service Counter downstairs. Thank you to facilities. It's beautiful. We also are really working on improving those turnaround times for commercial and residential permits. In fact, the the plans that you see here for this, and I don't pretend like I know what this is, the Remote Condenser Roof Curb Support Units. You know, very practical thing, but that is actually a real clip from some of the plans being examined for the Sheridan. And Ninety Fourth Walmart. It's part of an overall thirty million dollar investment that Walmart's making. In the community to all three of the stores, but just a real life example. And these are also real pictures from the field, electrical inspections. These are both electrical inspection pictures, but wanted to share, you know, what our team is, they are out in the field, getting the hands dirty. Putting in the work and making sure that these buildings are safe and up to code. So one of, and actually one of the compliments that I've gotten has been from the Walmart team. We have an A team assembled. We get together bi weekly with Walmart in Bentonville, Arkansas, and there are consultants in our team and everyone to talk about. You know, the permits that are needed for this Sheridan store and other stores. And working on continuing to maintain those turnaround times and maintaining our standards of review and safety. And we're also refining the standard operating procedures for field inspections and, as I said, we're reviewing all fees. Okay, so Community Preservation. This is your code enforcement, parking management and rental housing inspection. And as I said, in FY twenty three to twenty four, you see an increase. The rental housing inspectors were moved over to to this division. And and there was the bigger bump there in twenty two to twenty three. You might ask what what happened there? Where did those FTEs, where did they come from? That was Parking Management Group was a sep, was held separately. And then and in FY twenty four, we continue to work with our partners in the Police Department to take over. Civil infractions. So it gives our police officers more time to deal with criminal infractions or other. Business that they need to take care of. And in twenty four, the the parking team took over on street, private and public. Monitoring and citations to take that load off of the Police Department. And the increase from twenty four to twenty five is an internal shift around, again, no new FTEs. But moved a housing inspector position, reutilized a planner, a planning position on planner, a planning division position. And that is what is causing that increase to twenty three point five. But again, overall, no net new increase. And all right, so the Community Preservation Division, it's a great example of a before and after, love it. Where we had to come in and do a code enforcement, we call summary abatement. So. If we notice somebody and they don't do what they're supposed to do and there comes a time, can't wait any longer. It's it's a hazard. Safety issue, it's harming the neighborhood. We can come in and what we call summary abate. And we then put a lien on the property to be able to recoup the city's funds that were used to do the abatement. So this is an example of that, very successful abatement there. We are also stable here, as you can see, from FY twenty four to twenty five with our budget pretty much remaining exactly the same. And we have several, you know, very talented folks here, very involved in professional boards, enforcement and compliance professionals, certified. Parking, certified administrator for public parking, people involved in statewide boards. Board of Directors for the Colorado Association of Code Enforcement Officers. Just many, many, so many folks involved in that Colorado Association of Code Enforcement Officers. And we're very proud to be able to support them and allow them to have that professional opportunity. And our priorities for twenty twenty five in preservation. We are looking at continuing the achievement of ninety percent compliance rate on code enforcement. Our fifty percent officer initiated property standards cases. That means proactively finding. The violations. That's why that number is important. We do rely fifty percent on people calling us. And us responding very quickly to that. One example was last week, I was really amazed. I even wrote this up for our city manager, but you know, we had our, some folks had had put. But, you know, we had our, some folks had put some illegal items in the right-of-way, in the road. We found out about it, and within ten minutes, there was an officer on the scene, parking enforcement, tagging it, talking to the property owner. Property owner didn't know that he couldn't park them there. You know, there's legitimate reasons sometimes, and people maybe don't know. So we helped to educate them and say, well, you know, you've got twenty-four hours. Please, please move these things. And we came back the next day, things were gone. I just thought that was an amazing turnaround, that we got the call, ten minutes later, somebody's on the scene. In thirty minutes, we've already talked to the guy, we've tagged it, we've recorded it, we've entered it in the system. Go back during the twenty-four hour period, they're gone, and the problem has been cleaned up and solved. So that's how we would like them all to run. They probably don't, they don't. But that's just an example of one that I was really proud of, the parking enforcement team there. And we want to increase compliance efforts for our short-term rental licensing program and systematic rental housing inspections, as well as complaint-based housing inspections. So we have been working very closely, of course, on the atrium apartments. We had a full team visit on the seventh and the fourteenth of this month. We inspected every single unit. There were a few that we were not allowed entry into. Various reasons for that. It might have been there were just minors inside, aggressive dog. Could have been the person just told us, no, you can't. So, you know, we don't push in those situations. We just, okay, thank you very much. They'll let us know when it's a good time to come back. So we had a few, so, but we tried to do a complete survey of every single unit there. I can tell you, I talked to our code enforcement supervisor today and confirmed, because I was on spring break last week, every single one of the life safety items that were identified during those inspections, they have been cleared and re-inspected in person by our code enforcement team and rental housing team. So those have been addressed. There's other non-life safety things that still need to get addressed. Pest control, you know, windows that are, might have cracks and things like that. So leaky faucets, we're working on those as well, and they've got a timeline to come into compliance, and they will be re-inspected. So I just, I wanted to give you guys a quick update. I'm not happy to answer any questions. But we also have a meeting with UNI, United for a New Economy. Want to say thank you to Carmen Medrano, who's their executive director. She's been wonderful to work with, and we met with her and residents here at City Hall. Coming up on our third meeting next week with her and her team to address not just the atrium, but any other issues, problems that they see within the city of Westminster. And we're working with the entire rental housing team. And again, special thank you to Sam. This was not what she signed up for. She signed up to be a building official, but she didn't know she would be also managing community preservation and doing an amazing job, and I'm very grateful to her and Logan and everybody on that team. And, you know, it's dirty, it can be dangerous, inspection and compliance. For any of this, code enforcement, rental housing inspection, parking, you never know what you're walking into. You know, so we wanted to make sure these folks had refined standard operating procedures, had all the safety equipment that they needed, and have all the support they need. You know, we talked about male health support for staff members. You know, that's really important, and I've been working and talking with HR based on feedback from code enforcement staff and rental housing staff, that, you know, sometimes they see things that are very disturbing. I won't go into any details, but, you know, they, you wouldn't think that at first, maybe, but I surely didn't. But then talking to them, meeting them, learning them, learning with them. You know, I think it's important that they have access to that as well. There just are some disturbing things that they're running into. So, you know, I appreciate HR and I appreciate the partnership with them to help get them some access to resources. And, yeah, so we just were really trying to tighten up, tighten up the ship and increase compliance and get everybody safe and secure. Okay, and finally, redevelopment, I'm sorry, real estate development, and no longer the sustainability division. Sustainability, as I said, is now with the administration division, which is basically just reporting to me. Again, this was with the former economic development department, so there is no real past history to see here, but I can tell you from folks who are reporting in this division, there is no net new increase here. This division is very focused, as the name implies, on our real property, not just city-owned real estate and looking to put that strategically to use. Examples include Holly Park, the recent sale of Knox Court, the Schoenberg redevelopment project, which we are going to be coming back to you very shortly on to give you an update on that and where we are with the developers there. They've been making good progress. Also, looking at strategic opportunities for departments. The team has been very involved in helping our fire department at looking at citing potential new fire stations. So that's, the team's been very involved in that as well. And also sustainability here, I will talk about it during this time. Again, it's not within this division anymore, but of course, it's striving from a really a very practical and economic focus on helping our residents and our businesses to be sustainable. And that's, that just means, you know, finding cheap, less expensive ways to do things. And sometimes the less expensive way is the more sustainable way. And looking at reuse and how they're using resources, deconstructing as opposed to demolishing things and waste diversion strategies. This graphic here, again, the chart's not very exciting, apologize. But as a new division, that's, I can tell you, it's stable. It's very much how it was when it was with the economic development department. And this image is from our sustainability plan. It has the seven focus areas of that plan. And on four, seven, so in two weeks, Bridger has developed an annual update for the sustainability plan. So the city's sustainability plan, we have defined metrics for each one of those seven areas. And he works with departments across the organization on how to look at cost savings for the city, how to apply different cost-saving measures, and how to be more sustainable as a city in various ways. We've also, this sustainability effort has been amazingly successful at grants. Recently, last year, won a one million dollar grant for the city from the state to promote resiliency and to stand up the proposed resiliency education center at the new water treatment facility. So making that all grant-funded, Bridger and his team are amazing at finding those opportunities. He also found an opportunity with CU Boulder, students within the Masters of Environment, sorry, environmental program, for their capstone senior project, or last year of their master's program. To, we were able to compete against several, several cities, dozens of cities. And we won the ability to have three grad students working with the sustainability office for no charge and helping analyze our internal city operations, again, in terms of waste diversion opportunities and waste reduction opportunities. So we're very excited about the work those students are going to be doing for free for us. And again, there's a lot of work that's done with the sustainability division or office with businesses, with helping them through the Sage program, through converting to solar, to getting involved with solar co-ops, saving residents money, and helping lower bills for our businesses as well. So they're more sustainable. And priorities for real estate and sustainability. Obviously, managing the downtown project is a lot of work. It's very time-consuming. Working on deal structuring activations. We'll be coming to you shortly with a proposal with the Westminster Chamber of Commerce and the Downtown Business Association for some activation. So stay tuned for more on that. It'll be very exciting. As I said, we're facilitating redevelopment within the Westminster station area, and it brought several projects to you recently there in that area. We'll be bringing Schoenberg Farms back very soon in spring, summer to talk about the development agreement proposal for that. And again, we are working on assisting the entire city with its real estate portfolio and also creating opportunities for HOAs and neighbors through our sustainability department division to implement sustainable practices, whether that's working with our team in planning and water-wise landscaping or through mini-grants to help fund some of those initiatives for neighborhoods. And finally, promoting and streamlining the adoption of renewable energy generation for our city operations. And stay tuned. I think we've got a lot of really exciting things on the horizon as far as sustainability and especially waste diversion and transportation and mobility options. We recently received a small grant to help with our city employees who commute by bike. And some of the recent changes to our security system out here no longer allows them to enter through the back where they would park their bikes and have cover and protection for them. We received a grant to be able to go ahead and design something that'll be out here so that they can, when they walk into the security level, they'll have a safe place to park their bikes. We have quite a few folks who commute at the city via bike. So I'm really proud of Bridger and his work to help those bike commuters to have a nice, safe place to maintain their bikes while they're at work. And finally, an overview of everything. Tried to get pictures of everything to represent what we're doing in this amazing juggernaut of a department. And I've shared a lot with you. Could have gone on a lot longer, but sorry. But these are all economic development planning, building, community preservation, real estate, and our sustainability practices are all pieces of that cycle for prosperity for our community. As I said, if I could leave you with one thing, a stronger economy generates more tax revenue for the city and allows us to be able to invest in other city functions, such as parks and libraries and things that our partners do, like schools. And we are here. We want to listen to the community. We want to translate those values and vision into reality and into the built environment and into how we support our business environment. And, you know, we are very mindful of taxpayer dollars. We always try to look to partnerships, collaboration. I hope, I've said it enough times, that we are committed to holding the line on our budget and our FTEs and looking at being creative to get our job done. So with that, I just, I want to thank you for your time and your support of this wonderful team that I have the privilege to lead, and we're happy to answer any of your questions. Thank you. Counselor Hutt?
Yeah, so I have a super important question. So last year, we had Jazz Night, and you said that we're going to have more events. And I heard a rumor about what we're doing this year instead of having a Jazz Night. Can you tell me any information on that, like the date and time? And when, when will it be in the calendar so I can start telling people?
Thank you for that really important question, Counselor Hutt. We will be doing salsa under the stars this year. Details are still being figured out, but it'll probably be late summer. And as soon as we have those details available, we will, of course, share it with you. But I am a better salsa dancer than a jitterbug dancer, so.
Is this a setup? Aren't you doing salsa lessons?
When he first told me, I said, you're joking, right? Like, I really thought it was a joke. It just happened to be coincidence. I promise, I had nothing to do with it.
Life is full of them.
I had nothing to do with it.
We'll let you know as soon as the details have been found.
Okay, thank you.
No vacations late in the summer.
Right, clearly.
Counselor Azadi?
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to start by saying, this team of yours, Director Kimbo, is so amazing. You know, Stephanie and John and Sam, nice to meet you, and all the rest of you. And I think one of the first feelings, so you've got elected and you've start looking at things in terms of feeling sometimes, right? And one of the first feelings I remember in my first year on council was how great I felt about you when you were first hired, right? And like, oh, wow, look at her background. And then I started seeing, and I met Stephanie, and I met all these amazing people. And it's just a great department, and I love all departments in the city, but I just wanted to say that you are a juggernaut, and I'm really proud of you guys, and I feel good about you guys. And thank you, Sam, for taking on the atrium. You saw my email. So I took this tour with residents, and it was very terrifying. I saw some disturbing things, so I'm glad you guys are working on that because what I fear is, I don't know how many other buildings there are like that, right? So if that's one, I'm sure you can go in there and fix the ship. And I don't think it was our fault. I think it's just a function of maybe lack of employees, lack of capacity to do the work for a whole city, right? So thank you for taking that on. And the question I have is related, so the idea you had about the fees, I'm very, I'm very, very interested in because, because cost-neutral future is exciting. But more importantly, I think there are particular crimes in the city that need higher fees to deter and to deter some of the behavior. And if we haven't looked at these for a couple, for a couple of decades, that makes a lot of, that makes sense, right? Because they do seem low and lots of different, there is some, I'm very excited to see what you come at with to us there. And finally, on the childcare piece, so in a strategic planning retreat, we gave direction on you guys. So I think it's you handling it, right? You're leading or you're in collaboration?
I'm in collaboration with our HR team and as well, our IT team has been very active under Larry Dorr's leadership. So we're all working together.
So I'm looking forward to seeing what sort of options you come up with. I think that there's lots of opportunity to give some relief, to bring some childcare businesses into the city and figure out how we can do that.
Yeah, and, sir, if I could, if I could share, on Wednesday, Deputy City Manager Dorr and I and members of my team, Stephanie, we're going to be going down to visit with senior resources. And I believe, I'm so sorry, I cannot remember who made that connection, but I feel like it was a counselor.
He used to be on their board.
Counselor Demont, okay. Yeah, so met with Chris, and Chris, he was amazing. We did a virtual meeting a couple of weeks ago before spring break. And I'm saying all of this to say, what does seniors have to do with childcare? But he had a really fantastic concept of senior daycare, adult daycare, and how important that is as well for working families. Because you kind of get to, well, my, and I'm stuck in both. I've got small and I've got older parents, right? So some people are dealing with both, right? How do I find childcare and adult, a place for mom or something like that, you know, during the day? Or just to get a break once a week, you know? So there's a lot of people who are working through that. And I thought it was really intriguing, because what we're going to go down and see is their prototype adult daycare center, which I'm really excited to learn more about. And I, you know, I think there might be, I don't want to talk too soon or, you know, say something out of turn, but I think there is an opportunity to have a location. Again, I know they used to have a satellite facility, he told me, here in our community. And I think we might be able to work a deal out where we could have another one of those, and it might be a senior daycare center, which, you know, have a lot less, right? Just because they're adults, you know, there's a lot less regulations. And there's a whole spectrum of what the needs are of the folks. They have to be, they have to be able to walk, they have to be able to feed themselves and use the bathroom by themselves. But so there's a wide spectrum of folks who would be able to attend that. And it's not as regulated and time and cost prohibitive to stand up a senior daycare center. So I just want to share that with you, because I know you were very passionate about the childcare issue, but the senior care.
Yeah, you know, senior, so when you think about the most vulnerable in our society, right? It's the young and the old, right? And senior care is actually, it has the same impact on the same. So it's, when you think about the childcare crisis, we have a lot of adults and working families who are leaving their jobs and not being able, because they can't afford to, so they have to stay at home. Similarly, those same people are taken care of, their parents, their grandparents. And they need support and they need relief, and there aren't enough providers there either. So I think if there's a synergy there, for sure. Thanks for looking into that.
Yeah, thank you. Mayor Protem?
Computer. Still asleep? Yes. Okay, I guess I'll just start with, thank you for the presentation, and I know you have a great group of people. So the fee analysis that you mentioned for, is that going to be done this year or next year?
I'd like to get it done this year.
Okay, are you doing that externally or internally?
I'd love to be able to get it done internally. I think we've got it, even just our first initial cursory glance of surrounding communities and the amount of time that has occurred, I'd love if we could. I'd love if we could get it done with in-house resources, but we might, you know, have to, have to use somebody outside to do a, you know, a deeper dive analysis if we don't have the capacity.
Okay, the reason I ask is I'm just, you know, it's great to think about like being able to, you know, recoup all of our, our, our time, but it also has an impact on development, community, and you don't want to end up, like having to end up like rebating fees that we just increased that, you know, just because we can't get to a level of development feasibility. So just kind of wondering if we plan to have somebody do some analysis to?
Yes, absolutely.
And then with all of these budget focuses on for 25, it's like I'm trying to glean what should we be focusing on for 26? And so I know, you know, like you have certain programs that support small businesses or the neighborhood improvement programs or anything like that, like that would be helpful to understand kind of what's our utilization, do we need to be looking at less or more? And so that's what I want to have going into the 26 budget development.
Okay.
And then, and I guess that kind of also goes a little bit into, I know we've had some back and forth about like the rental inspection program and what do we need to resource that adequately as we're having a lot of our rentals age. I know Manager Andrews had talked about kind of utilizing some of our building inspectors and cross-training. Is that enough? Or I know you're trying to keep your FTE at the same level, but it would be helpful to understand the need there.
Okay.
Thank you.
Councillor Ireland?
Thank you for the presentation. I did analysis of water tap fees a while back when we had our former city manager, and we were low compared to surrounding areas. I don't know what we are with other fees, but I'm guessing we are low because we haven't looked at them for so long. When is P of Chings up?
The question of the year.
Two years.
They're moving, they're moving again.
There is, hi again. So I've heard a rumor from the, somebody in the know, is all I'll say, and we're looking at probably the first couple of weeks in June.
Whoa.
Good, because it's an eyesore for the orchard, really. Do you keep track of the unemployment rate in our city?
We're pretty flat right now, we do, we publish it every quarter.
And where are we at?
We're at, right now, don't quote me, it's, we produce it every, we do look at it quarterly. Matt, I'm actually going to look at you, we're at 3.9?
I think we're actually over 4.
Yeah.
Is it increasing?
It has been a little bit, yeah.
Okay. Do you see that homelessness is affecting keeping businesses or attracting businesses?
Yeah, thank you, I was just making sure. It is, homelessness is definitely an issue in the business community. When we toured several businesses, it's one of the more common concerns from them, and that's where we offered the emergency and safety grant where we will help reimburse for lighting, extra security if something was damaged caused by homeless interactions. We'll help pay for that. We've had some pretty good success with that, but yes, it is.
And how much is that grant?
It's up to 5,000.
And how many have you given?
This year, we just stood it up pretty late last year, so we've given out, I believe, five.
We're up to 25,000 there? Do you think that's enough?
No, ma'am.
I didn't think so. Also crime, like shoplifting, is that a deterrent for people wanting to run a business in Westminster?
Yeah, and I would defer to Police Chief Halbert, if he's out there, on the exact crime statistics, I don't know. We've heard though, kind of anecdotally, that there are very sophisticated crime theft rings, retail theft rings. I've seen it happen throughout the metro district. I, you know, yeah, I would say it is a deterrent.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Councillor Demont?
I just wanted to add what the senior resource, so A, I appreciate it. That is, I mean, there's so many different components of it, including mental health of caregivers. But I wanted to give a shout out to our inclusivity board because I made the connection with them, and they've really been pushing to make sure that we do more for seniors. And if you look at our resident survey, one of the things that I thought was unfortunate was that people don't see this as a good place to retire, and so that's our residents saying that. So, you know, I continue to be a big advocate for all the different senior services that we need in different living spaces, whether it's market rate, housing, or the affordable. We need to make sure that we're accommodating because those needs will continue to increase.
Thank you.
Thank you. I, I just wanted to say I really admire all the work that you and your department do, and I really admire your ability to embrace the innovative mindset. I feel like we've seen that through the projects that you've brought to us throughout the city. We've seen it with the way that you have interacted with your department and, you know, blended your teams. And we've seen it with your ability to make partnerships with the allies throughout our city and come up with creative ways to solve different issues that we see. And so I just want you to know that it's not unnoticed. I really admire all of the different things that you're working on. I don't think I really have, I'm trying to, there is one ask that I've actually had on my backburner mindset for a long time that I'd love to maybe have with the meeting with yourself and the manager. It's just a walkthrough of setting up a business in our city. And so that's been, you know, I don't know if anyone else is interested in that, but it's something I've been meaning to ask of the manager. But just, you know, come with you, get a meeting, figure out how to do that, and then I can have a better ability to talk to residents and businesses about that.
Yeah, I'd be happy to do that.
Yeah.
Sorry, you could see me trying to get our attention. We actually do an annual training, it's coming up, how to open a business here in Westminster. It's a collaborative, all of the divisions. If you would like to attend that, we'll make sure you get that information as well. It's usually publicized in our e-newsletter. And again, it's a really great kind of 101 on how to open a business, how to do business here in the city and with different tracks.
I would like to, thank you.
I'd like to go too.
Yeah, make sure it gets onto your calendar.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, appreciate the kind words, thank you.
Thank you to you and your team, the trainings that you provide and you work with, the Small Business Association and at Front Range has been just incredible because small businesses, whether it's one person up to whatever, 50, those people really appreciate having the opportunity. A lot of times you do have grants or some sort of help so they don't have to pay the full piece or they can reg, or try to get a, I can't think of the right word, but they can get it paid for. The other thing is, there is no city that really talks about cottage food industry. You know, that's one of my businesses. And I, I think we have people that are selling and doing things without those proper licenses and the proper things that they're supposed to do to get trained. They have to go through the CSU extension to get their license, that license in order to do it. But we have a private group on Facebook, and people just do not know where they belong in, do I need a business license, do I need the tax license, do I need the federal? Yes to all three because you have to pay your taxes, both state and federal, and, and every city has a different how you get your business license. City of Westminster is very simple, very simple, because I've had to get them in three other cities when I go around doing my selling. So you do that, but if you ever want to do anything with cottage foods, I always offer, I'm always willing to help. And I know some of the folks in the Thornton-Broomfield area set up during COVID. We set up just a cottage food vendor event with, at that time, a person that was here that used to run the North Metro Chamber and Greg Moss. And he allowed us to do it over at the ice rink because nothing was open, so we had to have a restroom. So that was my house because it was only four houses away. And we set up, everybody had something different, and we sold out before our time was up.
How was that?
Yeah. So those are fun and people don't understand, and I think we've got some great people out there with great recipes that would qualify under cottage food. And it's just a good hidden thing that, that I think even at Christmas time, some of our bigger stores and a cottage food. If Total Beverage had five booths there that, while people are getting ready for their holiday stuff and they see booths that are selling things that they could provide at their party, there's no conflict of interest there, and it would be a win-win for everybody. So I always have those ideas following through my head.
I love that, and if I could just rip off that quickly, we will be coming to you in, on the 7th, March, yeah, April 7th, we'll be coming to you with the Chamber and the Downhill Business Association I mentioned, but about activations and part of, the major focus is really on not doing big bang events, but local community events. And it just really struck an idea in my head when you were talking that working with the Chamber and one of those events could be a cottage food extravaganza or whatever it is on the pavilion, and that will allow all those folks, like you were saying, you had done that before with North Metro Chamber, and be able to sell and have people come from all over and learn about cottage food, get certified, learn about. There's a lot of just great opportunities with that.
And to help people that want, need to earn some extra money, but maybe want to stay home with the kids or whatnot, there's still those opportunities to be able to sell out of your house if you, but I'm scared to death because I can go to farmer's markets and whatnot, and the label will be beats because somebody canned them. That's not cottage food scenario, and somebody brought me something like that. That's what worries me, I'll get shut down because somebody's not following the rules.
Thank you.
But thanks for all you do.
Thank you.
Your whole team.
Thank you all for your support.
And thanks for a late night.
Thank you.
Do you need a quick break to wake up, or you want to keep rolling?
Let's roll.
Okay. Next is Westminster Chamber.
Thank you, Mayor, yes, Westminster Community Foundation. And I'll just signal to Acting Director Otzelberger, who's entering the boardroom now, and those members of the Westminster Community Foundation Board and Executive Committee who are here, sir, and they'll join us at the head of the board table.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, Council, Acting Manager Dor and Acting Deputy Kimball. With us this evening, we have Brian Head, who is, I think, no stranger to the group. You may know him from his efforts with the Westminster Chamber of Commerce. And I don't know whether to call you Acting Director, Transition Manager with the Westminster Community Foundation. Mike Lazar, Chair of the Board, and other, other members are with us here this evening. They're here to present to you transition that they're going through, and they have a request for you this evening, and we're working from the city side just to support in transition and your direction on the path forward, at least in the, in the shorter term. With that, I'll turn it over to Brian.
Excellent. That's a, that's a tough act to follow. Lindsay and her team are just awesome to work with. We're just so thrilled to have them as a partner. So thank you for the opportunity to meet with you this evening. For those that might not know me, my name's Brian Head. As Eric said, I'm currently acting as Executive Director of the Westminster Community Foundation. Mike Lazar is our Chairman of the Board. We have Mary Lee Menard here, who's on our Board of Directors, and then Ryan McCoy in the back, and Marilyn Pluckman. So I have spent the last 15 years or so working in a variety of capacities within the community. I'm one of the founders of the Westminster Chamber of Commerce. I serve as President of Woodrow Wilson Academy, and I've served in leadership capacities with a number of nonprofits across the state. I've been aware of the Community Foundation for many years and have hoped that it would reach its full potential. My formal involvement didn't begin until the end of last year, though, when I was made aware that the Foundation intended to move on from their existing Executive Director, and I was asked for recommendations on potential candidates to fill the role going forward. It quickly became clear to me that we would have trouble attracting, attracting the caliber candidate that our community deserves because of the state the Foundation was in at the time. As far as I can tell, the Foundation has existed for roughly 24 years, and in that time, it's deployed just over $1 million in funding to various causes and projects around Westminster. If you do the math on that, that works out to be just over $41,000 in giving per year. For the sake of contrast, the city has paid the majority of the Executive Director's salary over the years, most recently at an amount that totaled $115,329 per year, total compensation and benefits together. In other words, it costs almost three times more to run the Foundation than the value that the Foundation brought to the community. I believe the reasons for that have become clear. Structurally, the oversight of the Foundation was set up like unlike any other endeavor that the city has engaged in, to my knowledge. Until November of 2024, when the Foundation's Board voted to end the MOU with the city, the Foundation's Executive Director was a city employee reporting directly to the Director of Parks and Recreation. That individual was on the city's payroll, received city's, city benefits, and officed out of City Hall. The city invoiced the Foundation for the Foundation's portion of the Executive Director's salary each year. The Foundation's Board of Directors relied on the Director of Parks and Recreation to oversee the day-to-day duties of the Executive Director, while the Board served more as an advisory body rather than in any supervisory capacity. Because the Executive Director reported to the Director of Parks and Recreation, much of the Foundation's focus over the years has been parks-related, although that was never specific or explicitly stated as the mission of the organization. Over the past couple of years, the communication, the quality of the communication between city personnel and the Foundation's Board of Directors diminished significantly. The Board made assumptions in good faith that the Executive Director was fulfilling her duties under the city's approved supervisory structure. She made decisions on behalf of the organization, which the Board believed had been approved by her supervisor within the city. Since, it has since come to the Board's attention that certain critical functions of the Executive Director's role were not performed, and the city failed to provide oversight that was its responsibility in the previous MOU. For example, the Foundation has missed every 990 filing with the IRS since 2022, resulting in fines that are yet to be determined. The organization's bookkeeping and accounting practices are out of compliance with IRS requirements and standard best practices for nonprofit entities. At some point, the relationship with the Foundation's accounting firm was terminated due to a difference of opinion, and instead, a contract employee was hired at the Foundation's expense to help with bookkeeping. These changes appear to have been approved by city personnel per the structure of the MOU, but were not clearly communicated to the Foundation's Board of Directors. I want to be clear that I do not blame any single individual for the current state of the Foundation. Instead, I believe that the partnership between the city and the Foundation was structurally flawed from the beginning and put city personnel in the difficult position of being responsible to supervise an individual whose day-to-day duties were not typical of a city employee. With that, I want to move on from the past and talk about where we are today. We recently contracted with an accounting firm who works exclusively with nonprofits to bring us back into compliance with the IRS and our donors. They are also going through our books to identify any other issues they can uncover and advise us on best practices going forward. As I mentioned, we are not clear what fines or penalties will be due to the IRS, but we do hope to be able to negotiate those down. The agreement states that CPA hours will be billed at $200 per hour, while bookkeeper hours will be billed at 65. These rates were on the lower half of the various firms that we evaluated, so we feel confident that we're getting a good value, but also the expertise necessary to bring us back into compliance. Additionally, I mentioned that I'm acting as Executive Director of the Foundation for the foreseeable future. I'm doing that at a, I'm doing so at a cost that is roughly half what the previous Executive Director was being paid. For me, it's not about compensation, it's more about giving back to the community that I love. My intention is to get the Foundation back on track, build a network of committed, sustainable donors, and help the Board of Directors recruit a permanent Executive Director that will build upon that strong foundation. Last year, in partnership with Almost Home, the Westminster Community Foundation was awarded a federal grant from HUD with the mission to provide housing for young adults. While the majority of the funding passed, passes through the Community Foundation to Almost Home, a percentage was retained by the Foundation for oversight of the grant. We have access to those. We have access to those funds for operational purposes. Additionally, we have recently been awarded a grant from Adams County in the amount of twelve thousand, five hundred dollars that we can use for operational expenses that strengthen the organization's ability to serve our community. The Foundation's mission has been relatively unclear for a number of years. As I mentioned, with the city employees serving as Executive Director reporting within Parks and Rec, uh, many of the Foundation's efforts have been parks-related. This past year, the Foundation attempted to create a sustainable giving program, capstoned with a fundraising luncheon that featured micro grants being given to several area nonprofits, a few of you were at that event. While the fundraisers resulted in a net loss of revenue for the organization, it did serve to highlight the unifying force that the Community Foundation can be in Westminster. The Foundation was started to support the city. It has provided funding for a number of parks and has supported the Armed Forces Tribute Garden. These are important functions and will remain part of the mission of the organization. With that being said, I think it's important that the Foundation expand its vision to address the evolving needs of Westminster's diverse community, draw in new donors, and become self-sufficient. You all know that I tell a lot of stories, I, I do. Um, and there's a quick one that I think could illustrate the full potential that the Foundation has in our community. You all know that I'm active in a school. Um, I've told, some of you have heard this story before, but I think it encapsulates what the, um, what the Foundation could do. Several years ago, I was escorting my daughter, who's now in college, if that tells you anything, on a field trip to the zoo and they put me with the smallest group. And you know, as a parent, you're, you're in trouble when you're with the smallest group of kids as the chaperone because you got the troublemakers. And there's one little guy that's just causing problems all day long, right? And, um, you know, I'm pulling him out of the animal enclosures and, and doing all the things to keep him safe. And he, um, we get back to the school and the kids are eating a snack and he's, he's misbehaving again and the teacher's helping clean up a spill and this little guy's going crazy. And so she kind of gives me the look like, can you take him outside and just get him under control? And so, I take this guy in the hallway and say, what's wrong? And he's just like, I'm, I'm just tired. Um, having a rough day because I'm tired. And I'm like, okay, why are you tired? And he said, well, it was just cold last night. I didn't sleep very well. So I said, it, it was cold in your, in your room? And he was like, no, it was, it was cold in our car. And it turned out he'd been sleeping in his car. His mom, a single parent household, mom worked at a Westminster public school, um, answering phones or a public school in Westminster. And they just, they just had hit a point where they, they just didn't have what they need to, to meet their daily needs. Need presents itself not in silos. And we have a lot of great organizations in Westminster that are meeting specific needs. We've got the food bank that's feeding people. We have great people that are working on housing. We have other folks that are working on vocational training and things like that. We don't necessarily have the umbrella that connects all of that. And I think that's the potential that the Westminster Community Foundation has to serve the community is being the entity that really brings all of those things together. And I think you saw a glimpse of that at this last year's, um, community luncheon where we featured the micro grants that supported those organizations. Uh, I think that, that, um, we can be, we can be a force for good like that in the community. We recently signed an agreement to share office space with the Westminster Chamber of Commerce in the new downtown area, uh, and we'll be able to partner with that organization to better reach our community and capitalize on the generosity of our business community. This Foundation can be a force for good in the community. As our homeless navigators, first responders, school resource officers, and others engage with the community, we can become a powerful ally in providing our neighbors with a hand up when they need it. We can be a city where neighbors take care of neighbors. This Foundation can be a place where donors aren't just giving a charitable handout, they're investing in the upward mobility of their neighbors. We have a chance to make a real difference in people's lives. I'm here tonight to ask you to help us help the community and here's what that looks like. The city has issued an invoice to the Foundation for the Foundation's portion of the previous Executive Director's salary in twenty twenty-four. The outstanding balance is twenty-seven thousand dollars, twenty-seven thousand, three hundred and eighty-eight dollars. We would like to ask the city to withdraw that invoice with the understanding that the supervisory services the city was to provide under the previous MOU were not properly fulfilled. The previous executor, Executive Director was paid by the city in the twenty twenty-five calendar year, although that individual is no longer employed by the city. The remaining balance allocated for that salary and benefits is forty-one thousand, seven hundred and thirteen dollars. We would like to request that the city commit to funding the Foundation in that amount this year. The previous MOU committed the city to funding a portion of the previous Executive Director's salary in the amount of twenty-nine thousand, six hundred and ninety-seven dollars for the twenty twenty-six calendar year. We would like to ask you to consider instead of, instead, funding the Foundation at fifty-nine thousand, three hundred and fifty-nine, or three hundred and ninety-five dollars, which is equal to the amount the city budgeted for the Foundation during the twenty twenty-five calendar year. In other words, you would be eliminating the planned reduction in funding for next year and that difference in funding would help us, help make us whole for the costs that we are assuming to rectify the situation we found ourselves in as a result of the lack of supervision, uh, that provided for in the previous MOU. We believe this action by the city will also signal to the community that the Foundation is viable and a valuable partner to the city. We're confident that we will be able to demonstrate to the city an ability to raise funds and become self-sustaining. We hope that the city always finds value in contributing financially to the Foundation, but we also understand that the city cannot and should not be solely responsible for sustaining the organization. To ensure that we are being faithful stewards of the city's funding, I am more than happy to commit to reporting back to the city on our progress on a regular cadence of your choosing. This Foundation has the opportunity to make a real difference in the lives of Westminster residents. I hope that you will support us in that effort by directing city staff to work with us to draft an updated MOU for the city's funding of the Foundation as outlined here today. And with that, I'll open it up for any questions. Thank you.
Counselor Demat?
Um, thank you for the presentation. I know that, I don't know if Chairman Lazar was on the board when I was on there. Maybe you were coming on right at the end. Yeah, because we had the big meeting and we talked about what the purpose was. And I think I'd agree with you that, and I brought this up when we did our retreat as far as we seem to be at the time, an organization that was looking for our purpose through what money we could raise. And I don't think that that's a really viable tack. So I'm glad to hear that you guys have kind of taken some of that kickoff point and, uh, went a better direction with it. For those of you who know me really well, know that the first thing I did in the city was, uh, help with the Ridgeway Park. And I sat downstairs here in the multipurpose room with the Parks and Rec Director and a lot of people from the Foundation and we raised money. And I know Mayor McNally has, uh, their name on the ribbon at the park. I know my company at the time, Atkins Diet and Nutrition, has their name because that was an important thing. And I think that's one of the biggest, for me, most, uh, personal things that, you know, I've seen the Foundation do. So it is something that's important to me. But, one of the questions that I have for you, because I think that it does need to be, um, self-sufficient. Before you guys decided to, uh, change directions, I had started asking questions about if that director reported to the city, should it be in Parks and Rec? Because it seemed like there became a point where it was always about parks. And granted, that's something that I think was important that we did and I don't think that's what the Foundation should do. And the only reason I bring those all up is, you know, in the next two years, if we do this, besides reporting back, like what are some of the, the, you know, KPIs that you guys can benchmark for us so that there's an actual, like, here's how we're going to prove we're moving towards self-sufficient, um, operation? Because I think for you to be truly, um, self-sufficient and the most powerful for the community, I do think that you need to be your own entity that is a partner with the city, not run by the city. And so that's, you know, I, I am certainly open to us going this route. I just want to know, you know, unlike prior agreements, that there is an actual measurable end game where we're actually seeing the Foundation start running on its own because I think it's important for the community. And I think it's more true to, um, the original mayor who started this, his vision for what it was to be.
Yeah, I think that's a great point. I think, uh, a lot of you were around when we started the Westminster Chamber of Commerce and, and there were a million business groups out there, right? And the thing that we understood at that time and the thing that, that I think this board understands, um, and certainly I do, is that you've got to craft a compelling vision for people to follow, right? You reference like making decisions on what you're going to do based on what money you raise. I think that's, that's backwards, right? You, you have to cast a compelling vision. And one of the things that, that we always talked about when we started the Chamber is Westminster is, you know, five zip codes, three school districts, two counties, socio-economically and, and geographically diverse. And there needed to be an entity that brought the community together. And I think this, um, this Foundation really has, is strategically placed to capitalize on some of that work and, and cast a vision for really, um, giving people the opportunity to invest in their neighbors, right? So, um, it's not just kind of a blind donation to something. You're, you're helping somebody that's down the street that, that, that needs some help. So I think, you know, this board, we, we did a, a brief kind of strategic planning session in my first, um, meeting with them. And I think if you look at some of the work that they did before I got involved with the micro grant, Marilyn, who's sitting back here, uh, kind of helped orchestrate that. I think bringing the community together around helping our neighbors kind of navigate, um, the situations that they might be in, I think that's a compelling vision that people can, can buy into. As far as KPIs, I think we've got to raise money. I've done that a lot, uh, for a lot of different organizations. I'm confident that we can do it here. We've done it here in Westminster for the Chamber. The Chamber's grown exponentially over the years. And I think the city has, and Lindsay could speak to this, I think the city has seen value in the Chamber's involvement and we've been able to drive, um, drive revenue. And I think the same will, will, uh, be demonstrated by the Foundation where you're actually seeing us come alongside some of those folks I mentioned, our school resource officers, our homeless navigators, to help solve problems and, and get people out of the cycles that they might be in.
I appreciate that. And so I, I think that's good. The last thing that I will leave you with, I mean, for me, I'm supportive of what you're asking. I wasn't really sure, looking at the, the packet, what you guys were going to ask, quite frankly.
Yeah, there was no ask.
Yeah. But, um, in terms of what I think the power of the, of the group is, is to be the connector, like you said. If I think about the Ridgway Park in specific, that park wouldn't have happened if we didn't have the Legacy Foundation to be there to connect a local community need with people who had money in a way that we could, you know, then do something that the city was going to do. The city couldn't just take private dollars from people. They needed that foundation. So, um, I hope that's what you, you become because I, what you said as far as all these different entities and having that main connector for this local community, I see that as potentially being very powerful. So, um, I appreciate you, uh, very good presentation and very forthright, not that I'm surprised by that, but.
Thanks.
Counselor Irwin?
So I was the one that was not as supportive of, to begin with.
Yeah.
I thought it was a conflict of interest. Right now, I am undecided on the current form of it. But this is something my church does already, you know? You know what they do to raise money? Every month to help the needy?
What's that?
We skip two mills a month. And if you had everyone in the city do that, you could pay for this. Without any taxpayer money.
Yeah. I think it's, it's imperative that the Foundation become self-sustaining. And I think that's, that's the goal, um, certainly.
And skipping two mills is not hard. And if you could put that message out, you could raise tons of money to help people. That's my two cents, so.
Counselor Camellia?
Thank you for the presentation. Uh, I just want to say thank you for stepping into this role and thank you for being able to clearly articulate what the issues were. I'll speak for myself when I say that I have not been clear until now, um, what the issues have been. And so I appreciate that and for, um, clearly outlining where we are with the dollars. I really, I'm just someone who really appreciates metrics so that I have something to, um, base my decisions on going forward. I understand the ask and, uh, and while I appreciate your time, what I, my concern is your time essentially is donated right now. And so what is our guarantee? So we're fulfilling an ask to make up for the last director who is now gone. And we don't really have a guarantee that another director will be found or that you'll be on for next year. You're not really hired, right? And so, um, I guess I'm saying, I'm asking, you know, are you guaranteeing that you'll stay on until one is found or how long will you be involved? Or are you going to stick around until this is stood up? What does that look like?
As long as it takes, you know? I love this city, you know? What you all do is important. I, I couldn't sit in your chair. I, I like doing this stuff, um, you know? And, and, uh, I rolled off the Board of Directors of the Westminster Chamber several years ago and now they call me Strategic Advisor, I think is the title they put on my name tag now. And so, um, you know, this is, this is my hometown. This is where I'm raising my kids, you know? And, and, uh, I love it. I want to see it better, uh, when I'm done here than, than it was when I got here. So, um, yeah, I, I've committed, I am contracted with the, the Foundation, um, indefinitely to, to, to get us to where we need to be. And then, um, I've helped several organizations, including the Chamber, multiple times recruit, conduct national searches for Executive Directors. And, um, so, you know, I'm confident when it comes time for that process, we'll find the right person. But until then, I'm committed to, to being here.
Let me sit in and clarify his answer just, just a little bit. So, he's under contract for this year, for sure. But again, one of the reasons why I personally reached out to Brian and got him involved is because I know exactly who he is. And I think one of the problems that, I mean, I had as a newer board member for the organization is that I did not necessarily know who was with the organization. I didn't know what their skillset was. I didn't know what the capabilities were. And now as, you know, as I came to learn those things, you know, I came to understand that changes had to be made. I know who this guy is. I trust this guy. He has a proven, what, fifteen-year history of working within this community, something like that at this point? Um, and, you know, beyond his contract, I know that he's not going to sell us short. I know that he's not going to abandon ship. He will be there in large part because I'm here and I'm, and I'm still trying to make this thing work. Like I, I remember being in front of y'all, what, a little less than a year ago now? And, um, I wasn't really expecting to be back in this position, having to make some kind of similar ask again, yet here we are. So, we're reiterating again. We are ironing out the kinks, figuring out what the issues were and we're moving forward. This is not something that I or any of my other board members need to be doing. We're all here, we're all volunteers, we're all very successful professionals in our, in our own right. And, you know, we really don't want to be part of a failing organization. And it would be very easy to just say, you know what? The hell with it, we're done, we gave it our all, um, you know, time to go do something else. But, you know, we're here to stick it out and give it another go for the sake of the community.
Well, in that case, thank you, Brian. Thank you for your commitment to this cause and to the community. Thank you. And then would you, one more time, just outline what you said was your, was what you understand the vision to be? You said it just a moment ago in, in answering a different question.
I think, simply put, I think there's, it's twofold. We continue to support the city in the ways that we've supported the city with the Ridgway Park or the Nature Park, um, uh, or the Armed Forces Tribute Garden, um, and, and those types of things. But I think broader than that, we can really be the connector within the community of these great nonprofit organizations that are operating in silos. We can be the thread that weaves things together, which is in my mind, the definition of community, right? We are, um, taking somebody that's, that's in need and helping them navigate what could be an, uh, uh, an overwhelming process and get them out of the cycle that they're in so that they have a better future here. These are our neighbors. We don't want them to leave Westminster. We want to create a better future for them in Westminster. That I think is probably simply put our, our vision.
Yeah, thank you. I just want to say that it makes my heart just grow really big to hear you say that. So thank you. In my opinion, that has just been that you more concisely stated my ongoing message, um, which I think if we have a gap, it is the fact that we aren't adequately connecting what we already have as many different solutions to many different issues. And, uh, if we have, uh, a collaboration and an organization that is able to thread those different, um, organizations and able to help residents navigate what help looks like and where to go, in my opinion, that is the single most needed thing, um, that we have. And I am just really excited, um, if we believe that this can do that, to see that happen. And I would like to help make that happen in any way that I can. So, I love that message. I'm really excited. I'm really excited and I would love to support it in any way I can.
Thank you.
I was just frustrated that I come tonight and didn't know, I read all of the stuff I already know, and there's, there was, I read it twice. I even made a phone call and said, did I miss something? Am I missing a page? Because there's nothing there. So it's hard. I like coming prepared to a meeting, knowing what's on our agenda and being asked. I heard lots of rumors, so my head was sort of with those things that, because there was nothing on paper to tell me what was going to be asked for, or if you were saying you're closing the door on it, which I was okay with also. So I could argue both ways of keeping it, letting it go. You know, if you're going to be under the Chamber or, and that's what it's going to look like to the community, how many chambers have a foundation? I don't have that, I have no clue. But anyway, so that's my frustration is I've got to think about it.
That's fair. Just to, just to clarify, the Community Foundation is autonomous from the Chamber. I'm just using the Chamber as kind of my example within the community of building something like this. And I think there's some synergy between the two organizations that we can really capitalize on. One, one such thing was a year or two, a couple of years ago, we had a, I was talking to one of our paramedics who was telling me a, a story. He actually reached out to the Chamber because they had pulled a, an elderly female out of, out of their home in Westminster because the, the heater had broken in her home and she didn't, she was on a fixed income, didn't have the funds available to, to pay for it. And, you know, that's a situation where we have companies within the Chamber that would gladly volunteer the labor to do that work. They just need somebody to cover the part. And so, you know, things like that are gaps that, that the foundation could fill, which is why I use the Chamber, because a lot of people pick up the phone and call the Chamber when they don't have the answer on, on things like that. Chambers do have foundations and so there is precedent for the organizations working together on things like this. And then as far as just the, the ask, we wanted to come and just kind of have a, a conversation. I wanted to try to be as tactful as possible just dealing with, again, I don't feel like it's any one individual's fault that we are where we are, but I also didn't want to put on paper a whole explanation that could, could be misconstrued or, or misinterpreted by anybody who's worked here previously.
Counselor Zadi?
You want to go first?
Oh. Yeah, I just wanted to say again, thank you for taking this on. I'm very disappointed to learn the state that it was in. I do think your ask is a fair ask because these things happened while it was under the city. And I, I, I guess like you want to be careful with what I say, but I'm very glad, I do think it's a fair ask. And I'm very glad that you are the acting director. And like others have stated, I was pretty unclear on what exactly the foundation was doing. But hearing, hearing your explanation, I, I really like how you are talking about helping our neighbors. You know, we're, we're helping the people who live down the street and, and making those connections. And so I, I no longer feel unclear. And I think that the foundation actually has a chance to be successful now.
Counselor Zadi?
Yeah, and I'll just say that, so as a current board member, I, I've been on for, I think for like a year. And I've been able to see both halves, so the past chaos, right? And what it's, what it has turned into. And with bringing on Brian, I think Brian, you've done an excellent job. I think this presentation was excellent. That summarizes a much more complicated history, but you've summarized it in a really concise way that I think resonates and is true and is very accurate. And I just have a lot of hope that this team and with Mike and Marilyn and everyone and Ryan, we all care about the city. We all care about the future of the foundation. We all know the legacy of the foundation and why it was created, and we don't want to see that die, right? So where we're at now, what, what you've done, Brian, is you've brought this, you've brought the leadership that we've needed. And I think we've, we fixed, or we are in process of fixing these structural changes, these structural flaws, the past structural flaws, now moving towards a more self-sustaining. So that's nice to see and thank you for this presentation.
Mayor Proton?
Thank you for, for the presentation. I guess I'm still a little confused as to what this would ultimately be. It sounds like there's still some fundraising opportunities for finite projects, but then there's this crossover of almost acting like a nonprofit to, that provides, I don't know, service access and connection, which parallels, like some of the stories you're, or, you know, examples that you have are kind of parallel to programs that we have at the city, like, you know, the emergency repair program for homeowner, for low-income home, residents and homeowners. We also have like wellness courts that can help, or the wellness coordinators in the courts. We have homeless navigators. I'm just trying to, and we also have other organizations too that might help do this, like Growing Home. And it's just like, where do you land? And then how do you become self-sustaining with that service provision component? And I'm, so I, I need some clarity on that. And I, and I would also appreciate just a line item comparison to what the agreement that we had was in terms of kind of weaning the organization off just dollar-wise. I'm just trying to understand, have that comparison of what you're asking now versus then.
Good question. So we are a 501(c)(3) nonprofit, so I'm just scrolling up so I can find the dollar values for you. The previous agreement was actually in the packet as well. And included in that was the updates that you did a year and a half or so ago. So essentially, the, the city's responsibility in 2024 was 75% of the executive director's salary, 50% for 2025, and then 25% for 2026. So our ask is to not do the reduction to 25 for 2026. So I think as far as the, the function, you know, initially, we, I, I think this is a phased process, right? I think at, at first, we, we continue to fill the role that we're filling now, which is we have funds in the bank. I think it's roughly $240,000 in the bank that are earmarked for, for various projects. Some of them are parks-related, some of them are like the Armed Forces Tribute Garden, those kinds of things. We recently had somebody reach out that wanted to, to include the foundation in their estate planning because they would like to, to donate money to the, essentially to help a city park, which my understanding is the city can't receive those kinds of donations, so they need to partner with the foundation. So those are core functions that we'll continue to provide. The, with the micro grant program, and I think the broader vision is, what, what that highlighted is how many great organizations that we have doing these things in the community. Some of them are city services, like you're, you're talking about. We're not looking to supplant any of those services. We're looking to instead collaborate with those folks within the city and other 501(c)(3) nonprofits throughout the city that are doing good work on these issues. Nobody needs to recreate the wheel if we can just connect the spokes for everybody, if that makes sense. So I think near-term, kind of current functions, midterm would be really being that connecting thread. And then where we identify opportunities to fill gaps, that's where we would start providing direct services, that's longer term. And by longer term, you know, we could be years out from that, I think. But I think the vision is compelling to help raise funds. We, we have already met with donors. A lot of donors just frankly are waiting to see what the city does, just since the city has been such a, a primary, the primary funder of the foundation for years. I think that will signal viability to folks that the city sees a, a future and a partnership. But I, I do think there are people within the city that want to contribute here. Certainly our business community does. There's a lot of opportunities to partner with, you know, small and mid-sized businesses that want to make a difference right here. And then like Counselor Ireland said, I think even our residents, like I live in Highland Village, and, and our neighborhood Facebook group, they're always looking for ways to help. You know, we'll have folks that are, that are camped in the alley or in the creek between us and Walmart. And, you know, there'll be threads in the, in the neighborhood group, how can we, how can we help these folks? And I think that's, we can be a place that they can go where they don't feel like necessarily they're calling 911 or, or calling City Hall, that seems a little bit scary for, for some of these folks. And instead, it's a little bit easier to, to reach out to a nonprofit. So that was kind of a roundabout way to answer your question, but I think that's, that's my kind of phased approach to it.
Okay, that is more helpful. And I guess I would probably go back to Counselor Demott's ask for, you know, just like, how does this transition into, you know, if, if we can understand the numbers for our dollars and what they could leverage in terms of donations or, you know, giving back into the city? Because I think that would help us, like if we're going to make a public investment, hopefully soon to wean off of that. And what, what is that helping to bring in?
So I think what you're doing is, is helping build a runway for us to get where we're going, building out a more sustainable donor base. So what we wanted to be careful to do is not ask for much more than the city's already budgeted, right? So the, the $41,000 that we're asking for this year was already in the city's budget for this year. We're not asking for the full amount. Some of it was, was paid out to an employee that we had already terminated. We're just asking for the remaining balance. So we're not asking for the city to, to increase anything. The, the only increase would be to forego that 25% decrease next year in an effort to kind of make us whole for the costs that we're assuming to kind of correct the, the errors that were made in the past. So number one, that's where we wanted to be careful with the ask that we made of the city. I think what that enables us to do is build out a long enough runway that we can, we can go back out and do community outreach and, and relaunch the brand and create some excitement about what we're doing. There's a lot of people for a long time that, that just haven't had a lot of confidence in the Community Foundation or really firm understanding of what the Community Foundation's value to the, to the community was. And so I think the city's commitment, if, if the funding was to, to come through as outlined, would build us a runway to, to do some of that community outreach. And I do think we'll be able to raise significant funds in a, in a shorter period of time. And that's where I'm happy to come and report back on, on progress. Our budget is very light. We don't have any employees. You know, we've leveraged interns in the past. We plan to do that again. We have a fundraiser coming up in October, or in August, August 18th, I believe, is a golf tournament we partner with, Legacy Ridge Golf Course. They're donating the course and, and being great partners in that regard. And that'll be a great initial fundraiser for us. So I think that's really, initially, the city's investment is to build a runway to give us time to do that community outreach and then to just try to make us whole for the costs that we're absorbing to fix the, the wrongs.
Counselor Irwin?
Isn't Legacy Ridge Golf Course funded by the taxpayers also? But you're really asking the taxpayers to fund the golf course thing too. It all is, this is my problem with intertwining government and nonprofits. I don't believe in it. I don't believe in it. I don't think it's proper, I don't think it's right. And we see what crazy, at the federal levels, happen because of it. And it needs to stop. People should choose what they want to spend their money on, who they want to give it to, and not have politicians spending their money on nonprofits. And I'm done with it. Anyone else wants to take it on, go ahead, but I am done with it. I've showed you an idea of how you can raise money with people who really care about their community. And I think you could run with it and you wouldn't need us or the money from the taxpayers.
Yeah, yeah, you and I don't disagree. I founded a Chamber of Commerce. I, I would argue that I'm probably the biggest advocate of the private sector in the city of Westminster.
Well, run with it then.
So I, and, and the path here that we're outlining is a path to self-sufficiency. And, and so that's really where we're going.
What we haven't given a nonprofit, $41,000 other than, other than this one in the past year, is usually a thousand, two thousand, not 41,000. And I don't even think that's okay. So you guys might think it's okay, but from what I've seen at the federal level and how this money's been used, it's not okay. And I'm done with it.
Counselor Demott?
I guess I see it much different than the federal level stuff that we see that is very troubling. But reality is, the Ridgway Park wouldn't have happened without the, the foundation. That's reality. Like you look at the money that was spent on it, there was tons of private dollars. I don't remember what it was, but it was a lot of private dollars that needed the foundation in order to make that happen. So, I mean, local communities are much different than, than federal to me. But, but I, again, I, I am very much committed to seeing that, I, I feel like the, the foundation having the, some guardrails around it will make you run harder. I mean, that's just a reality. There needs to be more of a stick approach than the carrot that has been in the past. So what I would ask is, you know, potentially, if what you bring back is that there's some benchmark of what you need to raise this year. You know, it, it could be reasonable, but it should be reasonable in the fact of if we're going to do this, it shows that you're making the right headway in order to say next year, you're going to hit the ground running and in 2027, you're not going to ask the city for, for money again. You know, or in this way, you know, there are plenty of nonprofits that partner with government entities that severely benefit the public. I'll give you an example, Ralston House. Ralston House, their IT is from the city of Arvada, their, I think maybe their benefits, they, they do a lot of their administration, they share resources that the, the city of Arvada gives. And quite frankly, the city of Westminster benefits from that because, you know, Ralston House is an organization, certainly helps the most vulnerable in our city at the worst times possible. And that's seniors and kids. So, I mean, there's a, there's a place for this, this crossover, but, you know, that is my only, only big ask. Like I am, for me, I'm supportive of what you're asking. I just want some guardrails because, one, I think it's the right thing to do because this MOU or multiple MOUs have been redone over the years. And then it just seems like, okay, we're going to get off, off the, the city, but then we're back on the city. So that's part of it. But I think the other part is it gives the, the initiative for the, the, the foundation to actually start doing what it needs to do. And I don't think that they've had, you know, that kind of thing before. It's more like, we're going to do this this year, we're going to do this the, the next year, and then the following year this. And then you hit that year three and then we're having this conversation again. So that, that would be what I think would be really, make it more palatable. And I think it would make sense to, to the community a little bit differently if we had that.
Assistant interim city manager, you've heard at least four people say, move this forward. I think you still have some questions that need to be answered. If a MOU is started, that needs to come back as a draft, get input. And so I think that's the starting place.
And I'll work with the Director Otzelberger on that and the Westminster Community Foundation to put together a response for the council. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Yeah, thanks for the late hour. We've got three executive sessions to go. Do we have reason for executive session?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, the first executive session this evening is to obtain direction on a proposed development assistance agreement with Maker Housing Solutions involving a proposed affordable housing development maker at Uplands located at 2880 West 88th Avenue, and to provide instructions to the city's negotiators pursuant to Colorado revised statute 246402. statute 246402, 4E1, and Westminster Municipal Code 1113C4 and 7.
I'll ask each counselor that you're willing to go in executive session and you'll keep it confidential.
Toby Isad, yes?
Amberhot, yes.
Claire Carmelia, yes.
Christine Ireland, yes.
Dave Demont, yes.
Sarah Nermal, yes.
Nancy McNally, yes.
So one request I would make, Mayor, since this is the last three items of our meeting, would it be possible to poll your colleagues on each of the three titles such that we could adjourn the open portion of tonight's study session, and then just do a series of exec sessions before tonight is done? So would you be amenable to a second motion?
Yes.
The second executive session is to discuss strategy and progress on a proposed economic development agreement involving the proposed expansion of an existing business at 1100 West 116th Avenue, and to provide instructions to the city's negotiators pursuant to Colorado revised statute 246402, 4E1, and Westminster Municipal Code 1113C4 and 7.
Toby Isad, yes?
Amberhot, yes.
Claire Carmelia, yes.
Christine Ireland, yes.
Dave Demont, yes.
Sarah Nermal, yes.
Nancy McNally, yes.
The third title on tonight's agenda is for an executive session to consult with the city attorney on legal issues involving the Smith versus Westminster, U.S. District Court for Colorado Civil Action, number 20CV1293, SKCMEH, pursuant to Westminster Municipal Code 1113C3 and 7, and Colorado revised statute 246402, 4B and E1.
Toby Isad, yes?
Amberhot, yes.
Claire Carmelia, yes.
Christine Ireland, yes.
Dave Demont, yes.
Sarah Nermal, yes.
Nancy McNally, yes. And it is 10:38. And so the study session is closed. And while she's revamping, we're taking a five minute break.